January 22nd Planning Commission Meeting. Okay, we are coming to order. We will have the Pledge of Allegiance. We now have the flags from the City Council Chambers. Vice Chair Landris, would you lead us in the pledge? Roll call, please. Commissioner Proctor Bernardi.
Here.
Commissioner Fresco.
Here.
Commissioner Landris.
Here.
Commissioner McKinnon.
Present.
Commissioner Reese.
Chair Landry.
Here.
Clear the Planning Director's Report, please. It turns blue. Hello?
Hello?
Push on the top. Hello?
Hello?
How's that? Hello? Alright. Okay, so I'll just go back to the beginning of February 5th. So at the meeting next week, or at the next Planning Commission meeting, we have an update on the side of the retrofit program and new building codes, or area will be here to go with that. 1834 14th Street Development Review Permit, and then two ROIs, one for food halls and one for DCP amendments for process. And then we also have a discussion, opportunities for streamlining permit process. So that will all be on the 5th. February 19th, loose process thresholds, so again a change or looking at changes to the process for improving mixed use housing projects, and then also protections for existing housing stock. On March 4th, at that meeting, we will be at the Ken Edwards Center, so it won't be here. We have food halls and 2019 legislative cleanups, 438 San Jacinto, which is in addition to the Carlethorpe School. And then on January 28th at City Council, the shared mobility ordinance changes are going. City Council on February 11th, we have the cannabis IZO extension, and also Wilshire Boulevard safety improvements. And then on February 25th, at City Council, we have the St. Monica's Development Agreement Amendment that the Planning Commission reviewed a few months ago, and then a urgency interim zoning ordinance to address a temporary fire station that's located on the beach. So that concludes my report. Happy to answer your questions.
David, could you just clarify the loose ROI for February 5th? What's the scope of that?
So that's looking at the discretionary process for mixed use housing projects?
Citywide, not just the DCP.
This is like everything outside of the loose that we must do this one. Yeah, this is loose, right. Right. That's what February 5th.
ROI tonight is the loose?
Is the loose.
And the February 5th is the DCP?
Yeah, or whatever other plan that has process thresholds in it.
Anything else citywide?
Yeah. That's in the loose.
It's in the loose.
Does it go off by itself? Unless I keep talking, it goes off? That's tempting. Okay. So the Broadway Tier 3 is part of what we're going to do? Okay.
Thank you.
Well, then can I ask a question? What if we were to amend this evening's motion to include the DCP?
The not notice under the Brown Act for anything beyond a loose for this evening, so that's why we'll be bringing something back for you.
I don't think that that's a very acceptable way of doing it, cutting this up into monumental pieces. How does anyone get an overview of what we're trying to do here? I guess it's a question of why we're doing it. Let's discuss it when we get to it.
Yeah, we actually, unless there are other questions with staff, we are at it.
I mean, can I just add that in terms of, usually we have a Commissioner announcements, but I will not be here on the 5th, so I just wanted to note that for the record.
Okay, I think Elisa's back tomorrow, so she'll be here. Anyone else not going to be here any minute? Okay, I mean, one of the thoughts, Richard, was to have this ROI, I can't even say ROI, put over to the 5th, so we do it all at once. Would that be a good record?
Well, I think the discussion of changes to the planning instruments works best when you're dealing with the whole thing together. So you see the scope of what you're talking about, and people get an idea that you're not trying to maneuver something over here and over there. And I do think that the challenges we're facing both environmentally and with housing, meaning that we should be looking at the city as a whole in terms of what we're trying to do.
Well, and I think there should be some uniformity in terms of process. So from that standpoint, it might be good to look at the whole picture, too.
May I ask, is there a process reason for why this was split up? Are there, is there anything that's happening between now and February 19th, which is the first red line discussion, that would require us to break it up like this? Or could we combine them on the 5th?
To be honest, this was not deliberate. I have to be honest, we're moving a thousand miles an hour here.
I know.
We appreciate that.
That's why I'm asking. I don't want us to suddenly rush into something that doesn't, you know, doesn't comport with our particular reality that you're dealing with, so.
Right, yeah, so, you know, we're doing the best we can to break this.
You're doing a great job. You really are. So consequently-
And we're trying to have the hearing on the 19th, which is why we're trying to do the ROI, because we have a two-week notice period, so we're trying to figure out how to make that work. Do you think we can, you know, if we did the ROI on the 5th, to have the hearing on the 19th?
So if we did a combined ROI on the 5th, we could come back on the 19th with a red line, right?
I mean, there's no, if your intent is to talk about process thresholds, whether you do one or two, I mean, if that's your intent, then we're trying to accomplish that with tonight's agenda item and the subsequent one.
I think Richard has a good point about looking at it holistically rather than chunk by chunk by chunk. Do you feel strongly about that, Richard?
Yeah, I think that when you hear that we have a state allocated target of 9,000 extra housing units to fit in in the next eight years, it makes a great deal of sense to discuss the city as a whole, where we're going to place or potentially place the units, and what are the sorts of changes to process thresholds, tiers, allowances, entitlements, as a whole, even if we vote on them separately. And that would allow people to comprehend the changes that are being forced on us, and that we also want to contemplate together.
The process changes actually came directly from City Council, and so we're acting on that as best we can.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I understand that. When we went to City Council with the discussion, there were some things that were considered kind of low hanging fruit that we could do sooner rather than later. So what we're trying to do is to bring those things forward as quickly as we can. There will be a discussion about all of these items, obviously, before they're implemented. We will present it to Council as a full package as much as possible. So we're trying to kind of tell the whole story, but also be responding in real time to Council's request.
We really appreciate that. But I think also very critical is not to hold up 100% affordable housing AA review. So that's got to happen. So what's best for you? I mean, what do you want to do? Staff? What's easiest for you?
Well, I think let's put it differently. What's something you could accomplish rather than what's easiest for you? What's best for the city might be different than what's easiest. You know, respectfully.
So I think the intent is on the 19th to have your actual discussion, that would be your recommendation, the notice hearing for the recommendation to the City Council on plan amendments that are necessary for process thresholds, right? So that's the intent. When this ROI was prepared, that was with that schedule in mind. As the Planning Manager explained, it was an oversight to leave out perhaps other plans that still have process thresholds in them. So it is of no legal consequence if you adopt it tonight and adopt another ROI, because the recommendation will be packaged up together on the 19th, and it will be packaged up to the City Council subsequent to the 19th, all as a package for these process thresholds.
May I clarify, is there a legal consequence if we push this to the 5th and do everything on the 5th with action on the 19th?
Well, we are looking into the noticing piece, because you would have, that is exactly at two weeks, so we are looking into that item. So, right, so you would definitely be able to move forward with the notice piece. We are looking at the other issues, right? So you would have a doubt that-
There's no way I want to leave the DCP behind.
Well, nobody wants to do not what everybody wants.
Well, I think what you just said is critical from the standpoint, there's a chance that we can't meet the noticing requirement. There's a chance, you said. There's a good chance we can, but there means there's still a chance that you're hedging on that. So, and then we would be in a situation where we'd be looking at these two documents at different nights, which we just said we want to do at the same time. So for me, Commissioner McKinnon raises a good point, that we should roll these into the same ROI on a thing like ROI. Right. The only question is, if that overload staff, now they have two weeks to do both of the, the work for both ROIs, are they probably rolling forward with that work today? What I'm saying is, after the ROI, they have two weeks, they have to get their work done.
Well, are we gonna hear it or continue it? Because it sounds like the Commission would like a motion to continue.
I move to continue it.
I'll second that motion. May I ask, before we move on to the next item, looking at the agenda on the 5th, and I don't know what the notice requirements are, do we need to start at 6 on the 5th? Oh, it's already been noticed for 7, okay.
That's a pity, I was looking forward to your speech.
Judging by their written part, they may have achieved what they set out to.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Henry Servin, your Parking Manager. I'm hoping that you can hear me okay. I'm testing out this new podium format, recognizing there's a 65-inch screen immediately to my lap, which I will not be able to see, and I'm relying on my just newly acquired tri-vocals to be able to read my presentation across the room. So bear with me. I welcome questions along the way. I have about a 12-minute presentation, and I'll begin by prepping my slide.
Let's hear the report.
No, for-
Let's hear it.
Thank you very much. What we have for you tonight is part of our pledge to come back to the Planning Commission periodically and chat with you over some of our proposed changes to how we price and make a parking available citywide. In the past, the Planning Commission has taken an interest in many items in the mobility sphere, and particularly in parking. What we're going to show you tonight is part of a dialogue that began with the city's Budget Task Force, ostensibly an exploration to look at how the city might save on expenses moving forward. And as part of that discussion, not only did we look at how to reduce costs of operating city government, but perhaps looking at worthwhile means consistent with our policies and desires to perhaps increase revenues or begin to develop plans that would allow us to look at revenue augmentations with our existing systems. I'll walk you through my presentation, and again, I welcome your comments. What I'm going to be discussing with you tonight is the proposed reduction in the free parking or grace period that we currently offer in downtown today. Presently, we offer you a 90-minute free grace period to be able to come, park off-street, enjoy the wonderful downtown that we all cherish. And then if you wish to stay longer, you would pay a fee, but if you choose to leave before the 90-minute, you would not have to pay a fee. This proposal would examine reducing that grace period in year one, let's say, from 90 minutes to 60 minutes, and then as an option, reducing that grace period from 60 minutes to 30 minutes in year two. The recommended options that we presented to the Budget Task Force last year were a staff recommended option A, where we would do just as I had outlined a moment ago, reducing the grace period over two years from 90 minutes to 60, and year one, 60 to 30 in year two, or an examination of only looking at reducing the grace period from 90 minutes to 60 minutes in one year, and then leaving it at that, or determining, based on our policies and desires, to leave the grace period alone from any further changes at this time. The area, by way of overview, and I'm hoping you can see it on the monitor in a little bit better color, but we're looking at the downtown core in itself. It basically consists of parking structures 1 through 9, basically bordered around the areas west of Lincoln Boulevard, south of Wilshire, north of that Civic Center I-10 freeway, generally bordering around Colorado Avenue, and then generally in that area, just to Second Street. So we're looking at the locations with the red stars signifying our off-street parking structures. They represent about 6,000 off-street public parking spaces. To demonstrate what Santa Monica has done in the past regarding parking pricing, I'll take you back to 2012, when the City Council first adopted a new rate program that reduced the amount of free parking in downtown from the initial two hours to the 90 minutes that we enjoy today. That went then forward in 2016, where Council realized that certain behaviors were occurring, where people were, because of the low rate of the parking in downtown, were starting to use our parking facilities at a lower cost, and then using that to maybe commute to downtown Los Angeles. It became fairly apparent when the Expo Line finally reached downtown Santa Monica, that something needed to be done. At that time, the City Council did raise the parking rates in the downtown core to discourage that park-and-ride behavior, where people were parking here and, you know, going elsewhere, so they're spending their money elsewhere instead of downtown. Follow on, in 2018, City Council again revisited our parking rates to bring them into alignment with desired goals of balancing the system. We discovered that through the parking pricing adjustments on the off-street, we were able to bring our pricing schemes in alignment with a lot of the other West Coast communities. And so that was implemented in two phases. July 1st of 2018, we changed the rates for the off-street facilities, and then in July 1st of 2019, we changed the on-street or parking meter rates. Where we are today is we're looking at opportunities to change how we price our parking to reflect both our loose and our downtown community plan, and to also discourage some of the behavior that we see today that's induced by the 90 minutes, particularly the behavior of tailgating, where some folks, perhaps part-time employees or others, move their vehicle every 90 minutes to not have to pay throughout the day. We feel that this program, by eliminating that grace period or reducing it, removes that incentive to want to jockey your cars around the system. The side benefit, of course, is that it generates a little bit more income. Just over 50% of our downtown parkers do enjoy that 90-minute grace period, so 50% of our visitors do not currently pay to park. This presentation would examine that. The reason we're bringing this forward to the Planning Commission is that you are tied into the discussions of the loose and the downtown community plan, and so we find that certainly these goals resonate with this audience as well. In the past, you've asked us to bring these ideas forward for discussion amongst all of us, and we do take that seriously. We're looking for your input tonight. Our goals that we employ in parking are to make downtown easy to find for those folks that do choose to drive and park. We want to align our parking strategies with the city's long-range plans to make sure that our policies all do align, and that we provide adequate options and choices for folks, so that driving solo, perhaps, isn't the cheapest or only option for folks, and that we balance the system so that folks may consider use of public transit, shared mobility, bicycling, or other active transportation choices in getting to downtown, and leveling that playing field through a pricing program. We know that the use of other sustainable modes do help us to reduce that circling that we sometimes find in downtown, when some visitors may be coming into downtown trying to attain, you know, cheap parking, per se. So we feel that adjusting the prices accordingly and advertising those prices reduces some of that circling. We're also using our data, we've had a smarting dashboard, which is available to all of you if you wish, to look at our pricing in real time, and how that affects our visitor draw in our parking program. We want to continue to ensure that our pricing programs in parking reflect the desire to attract more people to downtown. That is to say that we would still be able to guarantee a parking space for those folks that desire it, and that we could work with the group to create ways to, let's say, encourage return visitors, particularly Santa Monica residents to downtown. So in that effort, we look to partner with communities of interest, including Downtown Santa Monica Incorporated. Some of the data that we presented to the Budget Task Force shows that by changing the pricing of the parking, that is, reducing the grace period at this time, is very much in alignment with many of our principles. The chart that I'm showing you here shows the rise in expo ridership over the last three years, green signifying the weekday ridership. We've gone from somewhere on average of about 100,000, excuse me, I better look at my notes here, because I can't read in that part. Generally, on average, 600,000 riders, absolutely about that million, two, million, two and a half that we're enjoying today. We noted that that has been, the rise in ridership, particularly for two things, when the train finally arrived in Santa Monica and was producing service at 12 minutes, and then that other bump in mid-2018, when the service finally went to six-minute service coming to downtown. We also show that the weekend ridership remained relatively steady, but again, at a significant rate over time. The other one that we looked at is exploring with the help of the Mobility Division, that many of our visitors to downtown are enjoying new and creative ways to reach there that don't necessarily involve a motor vehicle. We gathered data from a lot of the shared mobility folks, including Bird and Lyft, Jump Bike, et cetera, and we're also noting an uptick in folks coming to downtown by other means and driving alone. This reflected quite a significant change, and we were pleasantly surprised that folks are still, you know, coming, not necessarily by driving. What we offer here is that we need to be adaptive in how we provide our parking supply in the future. Within not only the core of the downtown, but the greater sphere of influence, certain changes are happening. As we speak, we're about to convert the former Civic Lot into a Sports Field. We're welcoming the Early Childhood Learning Center to the same location. We're proposing to develop an affordable housing project on the site of the existing Parking Structure 3. We're actively pursuing additional charging stations at all of our public parking facilities, which by consequence means that you have to have an electric vehicle to park in those parking spaces. We did have discussions that some of our parking structures, like Parking Structure 2, might have an opportunity to repurpose its roof for other activities, like a rooftop cinema. Lot 27, which is enjoyed as the ice rink, may be repurposed as a hotel soon on the corner of Fourth, Fifth and Arizona, and such and such. So we're looking at all these opportunities where we're right sizing our parking supply. And so when you right size your parking, you need to price it accordingly, so that those folks that desire to drive and park can still find a parking space. By way of comparison, we're not working in the dark, per se, but this slide shows to demonstrate what our current rates are across the board within downtown Santa Monica. Currently, we already employ a 30-minute grace period only at the Civic Center Parking Lot. That's the fourth item down on the chart, as well as at the library. We only provide a 30-minute grace period now. So what we're suggesting is bringing these nine parking structures in the downtown into alignment with our sphere of influence over time. We do not offer free grace periods, of course, on-street. If you park at a meter, you have to pay the meter. If you go to our surface lots in Main Street, in Midtown, off of the Montana Avenue corridor, in downtown where we do operate surface lots, or even on the beach, there are no free grace periods. We do charge you upon entrance, or we charge you for the time that you use. I went ahead and paid a dollar outside, because I didn't want to park in the parking structure, so I'm also enjoying the benefits of paying for what I use. So I just want to show this chart here that shows that what we're suggesting is not out of alignment with what we've done in other locations. Further, if we look just beyond our city limits, many of our other municipal partners are also looking at changing the grace period. Several cities have looked to adjust their parking pricing and grace periods based on the opportunities that they draw. I will point out that the one outlier, Beverly Hills, has chosen to keep many of their grace periods in place, predominantly as marketing schemes to continue to attract people to their downtown cores or commercial shopping centers. But other towns, such as Culver City, currently do operate under a 60-minute grace period. But if you look at towns like Huntington Beach Field, or the LA County Beaches, or what's happening at Reganda Beach or West Hollywood, they have already removed their grace periods completely. Finally, if we look at comparable shopping centers, although I would argue that downtown Santa Monica is incomparable, I do offer that in comparison with the Beverly Center. Beverly no longer offers any grace period at all in its parking facility. Westfield, they offer free parking all they, as part of their parking pricing model. The Howard Hughes Promenade has gone down to a 30-minute grace period, and I'm just pointing out some of them, just for example, of what they've done. Again, these are private entities that choose to price their parking for whatever programs that they're trying to encourage. Some of the locations that we reached out to said that they're discovering that many other patrons are arriving by shared mobility devices, public transit, or are driving and parking, so they're feeling that disconnecting the parking price from the shopping price is something that they're looking at attractively. Others do the opposite, because they feel that most of their visitors are coming back. Others do the opposite because they feel that most of their visitors are coming by What we're looking at in terms of changing the grace period is in this chart here, I hope it's a little easier to read on the screen, but for the rate schedule that we would propose in the first year, if that were to be fiscal year 2019, 2020, the one we're in today, we would suggest that we would leave the parking rates alone for now, but with the beginning of the next fiscal year, that would begin on July 1st, we would introduce a dollar at that first 90 minutes. So as you cross that 60 to 90, you would then be tacked on with a $1 fee. If you were then looking at the following year, '21, '22, that would increase the dollar rate to that point just after the 30-minute mark. So that time point up to 60 minutes would be a dollar, and then everything would cascade from that. I do bring to your attention that we would not make any changes beyond that three-hour period. The second big bump in our curve, besides the 50 percentile folks that park for free at 90 minutes, is that second one, where we do want to encourage folks to come to downtown and enjoy multiple activities. They seem to happen around that three-hour mark, where they may come in for a shopping experience and then maybe enjoy a lunch or a dinner, or a movie and a show, dinner and a show. So we wouldn't want to affect that behavior, so we're not proposing changing prices beyond that three hour. This would be a proposed pricing scheme for a weekday. Not to belabor it too much, but by weekends, because we do have different pricing schemes, we charge $20 max on the weekday, $25 max on the weekend, the parking rates would change accordingly as well. But again, not to affect parking beyond that two and a half or three-hour time period. I'm happy to go over that in detail. I note that sometimes it's a little hard to fill a rate sheet at you and then expect you to digest it, so please, please ask questions. I just want to recap what we're discussing tonight. As part of this roadshow, we're reaching out to all communities of interest, DTSM, the Chamber of Commerce, Santa Monica Travel and Tourism, the Commission for People with Disabilities, the Senior Commission, yourselves, City Council eventually, if this budget proposal has any traction. Again, the options before us are to reduce the grace period over two years from about 90 minutes to 60 and then to 30, or an option B, just do it one time to go from 90 to 60, or deliberate and discuss and say we want no changes to the grace period at this time. Some of the key trade-offs that we have received comments on and that we note for your interest with option A, they would tend to generate considerable income for the city. Based on our preliminary review of our parking model, it would generate an additional three-quarters of a million dollars in year one to the city's general fund. And if you bring it into year two, it would increase that to $1.5 million additional revenue to the city general fund. Our cities report this month issued that we are, in essence, looking at a $1.5 million decline in general fund proceeds moving forward in time. So this might be one option to consider to fill that hole. If you look at option B, it doesn't provide as much of a revenue draw, but it would still provide three-quarters of a million to the general fund if we just enact the first change from 90 to 60. It does provide a secondary benefit, as does the first, is that it reduces that time anxiety that some of our customers mentioned to us, that they feel that they're frantic and trying to accomplish what they wanted downtown in 90 minutes so they don't have to pay for their parking. We feel by gently pricing that $1 increment, it allows them to feel comfortable to stay here three hours or something like that and not feel that they need to get out in 90. Perhaps they spend more money as a consequence. Finally, with option C, if we do not do anything at this time or declare that we do not want to change the grace period, basically I remind the commission and others that it may not be consistent with our city goals and desires. No financial benefit would result to the city as a result of that and continues to induce some of the driving and parking behaviors that we're trying to decrease over time. This pretty much concludes my presentation. I welcome any of your comments.
Thank you very much. We have one chit. Would you like to ask staff questions first or hear the chit? What? We're going to take the chit first. Okay. Thank you, Henry. We'll ask questions after Kathleen.
Thank you, Kyle. Tells me she doesn't have a timer, so I'm going to behave. So as you know, downtown and the promenade in particular is going through a pretty significant change. Many traditional retail tenants have either restructured or shuttered their stores, and there's much more to come with this national phenomenon. You've also been part of our promenade 3.0 planning. And as you know, this has been very collaborative and inclusive process so far. Property owners have been at the table with the city, many of you, and having those hard conversations about reinvesting in the downtown. We've demonstrated time and time again over the last 24 months that we intend to work together to engineer and reimagine the next iteration of the street. You've worked hard with us to identify modification to codes and enable more creative and vibrant uses in downtown. Businesses and property owners are taking more chances with the confidence that the city has their back and is encouraging innovation and exploration for out-of-the-box ideas. We've made a promise. That relationship has been fostered and is currently very, very strong. Last week, a DTSM committee was presented with the reduction of the parking grace period as it appeared tonight on your agenda. The discussion was robust, as you can imagine, and concluded that not only is this proposal contrary to our universal goals of invigorating the street, it would alienate our residents, undermine our hard-earned relationship of trust with owners that we are going to need if we're going to fund any capital improvements for the promenade. It discourages new tenants from considering downtown if the cost of entry for their customers continue to rise. And in fact, there was support for consideration of expanding the grace period back to two hours and reinstate the $5 flat fee after 5:00 p.m. Both concepts would be used to entice visitors and tenants back to the district. We already know that the city's mobility efforts are paying off by reporting as many as 50% of our guests surveyed through our 3.0 work say they arrive to downtown by means other than a personal vehicle. That's great news. Those reductions, along with a series of other factors, automatically means less parking revenue. The proposal to decrease the grace period came as a recommendation to the budget task force, as Henry said, but there's no other economic analysis. In fact, as you mentioned, you didn't have a staff report. There's no alternatives for validation program. There's mention in the chart that the libraries have decreased grace periods, but in fact, there's a library validation program. We're very concerned about getting and retaining employees, especially line-level employees. And this becomes a value question about, is it really fair to charge somebody such a high amount to park if that's their alternative, but they're making $15 an hour? We strongly encourage you to roll any consideration of modification of the promenade grace period and parking rates into the 3.0 discussion and not support and decrease.
Thank you, Kathleen. Commissioner Landers has a question.
So I actually have a couple. You alluded to some of these, but what was the contribution of the promenade businesses to the city tax base back when it was two hours free parking, roughly?
I cannot tell you, but it's substantial.
And how has the promenade's contribution to the city's tax base changed since, for a variety of reasons, but since the decrease to 90 minutes?
Well, there's always a lot of factors.
Exactly. That's given.
Yeah. I would say that it was less about the parking revenue at that point. What we were concerned about, and when Henry showed the series of when the parking rates were changing, we, Downtown Santa Monica, came to you and to the city council to support those changes because part of the revenues from those increases was meant to help sustain those aging buildings. That hasn't proven to be so. So now we're charging more for buildings that have continued deferred maintenance, albeit you're working very hard, acknowledge it. But there's not been real substantial upgrades to things like the elevators and so forth. So we rely on that parking when the promenade was built, despite, I'm sure, huge upheaval in the 60s when eminent domain took that land. The city used that tool to build those parking structures. That is one of the key reasons that the Third Street Promenade actually became and remained successful for so long. Many of my colleagues in other downtowns just didn't have that infrastructure that we have, and it is a key element. And yes, things are changing. More than 50% of people are coming differently, which is wonderful. We support all of those efforts, but we just can't take another knock right now as we're trying to envision.
Where I'm going is I'm trying to understand, we heard from staff, purely on the economic analysis, there are some other considerations that I want to, later we can talk about, but purely on the economic analysis of the claim that we would, the city, we, the city, would make, and bearing in mind all kinds of budget projections that are coming, and some are coming more, are coming out next week, $700,000 in the first year, potentially, the claim is that that would lead to another $1.5 million. That assumes some consistent demand, which might actually go down.
Is there a question?
There is a question. How does that, how do those numbers stack up against the contribution that the promenade makes to the city's tax base?
It's couch change. Because the sales tax that the city gets from the downtown is substantial, 14% of the entire amount that the city gets, just the three blocks.
So my question is, do you believe that this could be a false savings? That the revenue gained by this change could actually lead to reduced revenues on the promenade and actually hit the tax base harder? And we could see a net loss in revenue to the city between the parking and the tax base? Yet, do you believe that that would be, that could result in a net loss to the city's budget?
Yeah, I do.
Thank you.
Substantial.
One other question, validations. I'm curious, Beverly Hills and Culver City both, Culver City does a four-hour validation, Beverly Hills does the two-hour free and the $5 after six. I was curious, when Henry talked about the, how long people stay, and you, can we go back, because it also goes to promenade 3.0, if we could look at it? I'm wondering, what is downtown Santa Monica think about the, yeah, there we go, what we will call the yield curve between three and five hours? I don't want to impose research as research, but if we're talking time anxiety, as a parent when we go for an afternoon to the promenade, my time anxiety kicks in when it starts to be two bucks for every half hour. And I'm wondering whether in the conversation about validations, DTSM has explored where the sweet spot is for those longer visits relative to the shorter ones.
I'd like to reiterate that I don't think anybody has done that analysis, including us, and it has to be done. The one thing that really concerns me about imposing a fee on more of the people that park is that, do you know how hard it is to pay and get out of the structures and the queues that we get? We're about to double or triple that experience, which is the first in the parking structures, first and last.
With non-functioning elevators.
And so it's, we've got to look at globally.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kathy, I have one final question. I just want to get to the kernel of what you've been trying to say, and that is that I'm assuming from what you're saying that we could not find a worse time to be doing this.
That's exactly right.
Given what's going on on the promenade, the fall in retail, which is not over, increasing parking fees at this point may not be in the best interest of the promenade. Is that what you're trying to say?
That's what I am trying to say. Thank you.
Mario, you have a question?
I have two questions.
Sure.
One, when did our sales tax income peak from the promenade?
Excuse me?
When did our sales, when did our sales tax income peak from the promenade? There's been presumably an erosion because of the natural economic decay of retail. And just where was that peak and where have we been going down?
Well, it's a very, you know, it's like this over the years. So we had an increase just before 2008, we were quite strong. We really did hold our own through the recession, surprisingly, better than we thought. And then we continued to increase from that point until within the last two years. And within the last two years, we're starting to see, last year we had, at our annual meeting, we had a bit of a hit. This year it will be more substantial. So we are at the beginning of seeing these things impact us now, but 3.0 will take us three years at least, that's being optimistic, to get underway. So I'm very concerned about the next three years, and I think collectively, we've got a lot of work to do to make sure that we do what we can.
Right. And so if 3.0 were to roll out and we were doing the physical improvements for whatever reason, in addition to the other software and operational things, how much of a hit do you think we're going to see just by the disruption, just by the tearing up of the sewers and this and the that and the tears?
Right. I understand the question, and it's a concerning question. Because we don't know the scope of the project at this time, it would be impossible to say. But one of the things that we're hearing time and time again from owners and businesses is that, yes, we need to reinvest, but we must be very careful because we have got to protect those businesses that are on the street and protect the access. So I can't guess, but I do know it will be significant.
Yeah. But where I was going with this, do you think there could be a conceivable trade-off saying, well, we're going to mess up their whole mall, but for two years, parking will be free? Is there a way to mitigate the impact?
That's possible. It's something we should absolutely talk about. You know, we're supportive of the city's mobility efforts, and we've demonstrated that time and time again. It's just I don't see this as much of a mobility issue as an economic one first.
Last question. Is there any real value to a 30-minute free stay? What can you do in 30 minutes?
No. You can barely find your book at the library and get out.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, yes. Commissioner McKinnon?
So would you prefer this discussion to occur when a number of other changes are being discussed about promenade 3.0, or do you just not want it, period?
I would never say we don't want it, period, because there probably will be a time in our future that this is the right thing to do, but it has to be taken, in my opinion, in the entire picture of 3.0 for it to be, for us to make the right decision.
So you don't want it discussed tonight, and you certainly don't want it moved on tonight, but at some point, it may be discussed?
Absolutely.
But not in the next six months or a year?
As we, I don't know how long it's going to take us to get 3.0 done, but yes, within that process.
So if 3.0 comes back, you're happy to have a discussion about parking rates at that moment?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you.
Are there questions of staff?
Mario, maybe Henry, you can answer this question. When you talk about people who are circling.
Yes.
How big of a problem is that?
It used to be a major problem in downtown until we did several things to encourage folks to drive and park once, which has been the philosophy of downtown Santa Monica since the mid-'90s. But with the introduction of some electronic wayfinding, some metal sign wayfinding, and marketing campaigns, we've reduced that somewhat. Nevertheless, we still see folks that circle because they may try to park where they believe that their closest activity will be, but then if they don't see access available or they see a full sign, they may proceed to the next part or decide to circle again, hoping that they get lucky. It's not as pervasive as it once was, but it still exists.
And how big of a problem do you think the employees that are chasing their cars every hour and a half or whatever it is?
It is a significant problem.
By significant?
We suffer 33 broken gates a month in our downtown facilities.
One a day.
Yeah. Amongst our parking facilities, one through nine, we, on average, see thirty-three gate breaks per month. Some of that is because some folks try to tailgate behind another customer, so try to avoid paying, or, or they blatantly just run through the gate because they're physically, nothing else that we do that we can to catch them. Although we do have pinhole, pinhole cameras, they're more directed toward customer interaction in case someone is discovering that they forgot their credit card, which happens about twenty percent of the time, or they've forgotten to bring some sort of payment system in general and they have to, you know, give us a verbal IOU. But the gate breaks are, are, are significant.
Uh, two other questions. What is the utilization of our parking structures?
On average, we're running in the low sixty percentiles. The desire that we strive for is to have all of our parking facilities priced in such a way that we would get to about eighty-five to ninety percent of the occupancy full and that the utilization would be that we could fill each parking space four to five times a day.
So if we were to go to that higher level of utilization, could we reduce prices and still get more money?
Yes.
Reach this the same way?
Sure. Discount because of the volume, of course.
And is that part of your discussion with DTSM or any other stakeholders?
Well, what, what I will say, that it's, it's a complicated answer.
Sure.
Certainly discounting the pricing would encourage more people to consider driving to downtown.
I understand.
And so, so it's a delicate balance. Certainly, um, we don't currently charge for parking on, let's say, a Sunday morning till about eleven AM because the demand is so low that it makes no sense to try to collect revenue from it. So, so we don't begin to charge until eleven AM. Having said that, we're, we're very mindful of not pricing it in such a way that might induce greater than eighty-five percent occupancy, in which case all we've done is increased frustration because then people will find that it's, you know, cheaper than a family of four taking a bus or the light rail to downtown.
And last question is, what part of the low do you think is only there for thirty minutes? Thirty minutes seems to be a kind of, how, how do you really use thirty minutes?
Sure. In effect, well, Kathleen answered it very appropriately, it's very, very low utilization. But the reason that we offer thirty minutes is many of our customers forget something and then are asking through the button to be released so they can go back and get something. They enter through the system and discover they've forgotten their, their wallet. So it makes no sense to charge them if they're doing a U-turn in the system. And, and we get folks that do that a lot. Or someone, maybe like Uber Eats or DoorDash, is parking off-street, not to double park, instead on a bike lane. They've arranged with us to have specialized parking in parking structures seven and eight in Santa Monica Place or in parking structure four, I believe. Um, thank you, Kathleen. So that they can collect the food from the restaurant that has it waiting, get back in their car and then go about their way. So, but that percentage is very small in reality.
Okay. And how about the percentage of, are there people who have purchased a parking ticket by the month where they just have their space and their, and how much of these six thousand seats are already booked, are already spoken?
So, so we do have long-term agreements with several large employers in downtown where we do provide monthly parking. Our monthly parking rate is substantially lower than the private community. We only charge eleven times the daily rate. So, you know, if we charge twenty dollars a day, that's twenty times eleven. And, and there's no way that like one hundred Wilshire or the other large parking providers can ever match that price. We, we don't encourage the, the use of public parking because we're really about utilization and turnover. We would rather want that shorter term visitor instead of that eight-hour visitor.
Right. But still, what, on the six thousand cost?
I, I have the graphs and I, and I probably, you know, I didn't want to take over the meeting tonight, but, but I do show graphs that if we look at a hundred percent of the folks using our downtown facilities, generally about five to seven percent are monthly partners.
Okay. Commissioner Andrews?
Thank you again. So I guess my, my questions are, really go to some of the comparison communities. Obviously in the promenade three point O process, there was a lot of looking at other, you know, frankly, the competition.
Yes.
So when you looked at, and I, I recognize some of these from personal experience, when you looked, for example, at Beverly Hills, uh, which, as you noted, maintains two hours free with five dollars after six PM. Did you ask them about the success of their rule that, the rule is actually two hours free in the city of Beverly Hills irrespective of the number of structures you use per day? Have they been successful in enforcing that rule?
In fact, they've been, uh, it's been a very lucrative market for doing that. Now, they have a very stepped up, uh, enforcement process.
Yeah.
So what they may lose in parking, they're making for, up for in citations.
Okay.
So, so that's their strategy.
Um, so let's go to Culver, so, so that's a question, which is, why not bring back a two-hour citywide rule? What about, let's go to Culver City where, um, the last time I parked there, uh, they took, they created my ticket, when I kicked out my ticket, if my license plate number was on the ticket.
Yes.
Same issue.
Yes.
Did you look at, um, license plate tracking for this purpose?
Thank you for that question. There's a lot of modern technology that has matured, and one of those is license plate recognition. But I am following the guidelines that were provided to me in two thousand and eleven. The city council looked at license plate recognition in Santa Monica and felt that at the time it might require further study because it might be perceived as an invasion of privacy. In order for a license plate system to help speed up parking, you basically store your information on file, including perhaps a payment system. So ideally, like in the Culver City, the machine recognizes you, gives you an immediate gate up, and then as you exit, may have already precharged you for your visit or free if you're within the time point. But basically, someone has stored some sort of personal information from you. There's nothing that prevents us from introducing the technology. Our new parking equipment in downtown is actually wired to allow an add-on of license plate recognition, but due to previous information, we have not brought it forward due to the implication of invasion of privacy.
You could presumably come up with some other identifier, but, so, and then my third on the technology side is, if I'm not mistaken, the city of San Francisco with parking structures has a big, bright, flashing sign that changes. And if you drive in at eleven AM, you might be paying, you know, twenty bucks an hour. And if you drive in at two PM, you might be paying fifty bucks an hour because parking in San, I mean, I'm exaggerating, but parking in San Francisco is expensive. Have you considered in, as an alternative to this whole model, um, demand-based pricing?
Thank you for that as well.
Really live, real live. I don't mean, you know.
So San Francisco is probably the, the, the most progressive in that area in that they've introduced true dynamic pricing, similar to London or, or Mexico City for that matter. We did introduce it to the city council in the two thousand and eighteen dialogue. We include decoupling the facilities so that the more popular or boutique facilities like parking structures one and three might have a, a higher fare because of their popularity and proximity to the farmer's market, Wednesday, Saturdays, and maybe reducing some of the peripheral sites accordingly to induce maybe parking a little further and then walking into the site. At the time, we decided that it wouldn't be appropriate to pursue that, but we definitely had the technology to price separately and to bring apart, bring about some sort of dynamic pricing. It would involve use of the internet, communication with people's technologies to be able to let them know. In addition to our wayfinding signs, we're about to install more this summer to tell people, you know, park for this amount in this structure or drive three blocks and park for that amount there.
I'm going to interrupt at this point, but what is before us tonight is whether it's the time to do fee increases or not.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
And we have two commissioners who would like to ask questions, so.
Ask one more then, which is whether you look for validations, because that was brought up in the public comment, and I'd like to hear, this is directly related to pricing.
I, I will fess up that I did not look at validations. It was certainly one of the mandates that both the city council and previous planning commissions had asked me to do that, to partner with willing partners to introduce those. What I did do in the meantime, since two thousand and eighteen, was to introduce reduced-rate part-time employee parking, where we offer substantially reduced rates to part-time employees that work in downtown, that, that don't need to park every day, but may come and visit for a nine-hour or a twelve-hour stay during the odd hours where bus services are available. So we've introduced that.
Okay, thank you, Henry. Commissioner Reese?
Good evening. Couple of questions for you. Seems very loud. And I project. When I first saw this, I got very excited. I thought we were getting serious about kind of mobility issues and trying to cut down on trips. So I'm curious, but when I hear the presentation, I hear a lot more about this kind of potential revenue increases. So in your mind, what part of this has to do with kind of the Don Shu theory of parking?
Well, it's completely in alignment with Don Shu in that we're shoepjes this. We, we want to charge for what we have. I presented a little bit of information that shows that we're rightsizing our parking supply. At some point, we're going to have to revisit how much we charge for the available parking. One measure to bring that change in alignment with the best parking principles would be to examine the, the grace period first. Lastly, then reexamining the entire rate scheme. So, so, um, I, I don't like to, um, I will acknowledge the fact that this was, this dialogue was begun, was begun as a budget augmentation.
Okay. But I'm glad to hear that you're acknowledging, um, your understanding of being shoepjes that. Appreciate that. And then how did, how do you see this interacting with, or did it interact in your mind with the promenade three point O?
Well, certainly we didn't do a, you know, a complete economic model where we examined, you know, years of sales tax history. We did examine a, a paper from Vancouver British Columbia, ostensibly another country, that, that in many ways driving behavior similar to us, that showed that, to a great extent, parking pricing and associated shopping in that central business district are, are fairly inelastic. We did discover that in the research, older populations tend to be more, um, concerned with the parking price because they're more used to, uh, lower-cost parking, whereas younger generations tend to be, uh, willing to pay a higher price if they're guaranteed that they will find parking. So, so our research kind of took us in a lot of different areas, and, and that's why we move forward with the grace period because that might be in alignment with both, where we might charge you a little bit to park at the onset, but it wouldn't be a large price increase, yet by charging for this, we're guaranteeing a little bit of higher turnover in, in our parking supply to make it more available.
Okay. Um, I'm a little surprised by the utilization rates.
Yes.
Like you said, sixty percent.
On average, yes.
On average. Um, and I don't know what the, in your mind, what is it that the city can do from the parking management standpoint to increase the utilization rate? And, because it seems to me that raising the price does the opposite of that. So I'm just, how does, what's your thought on that?
Certainly, we would partner with anyone that's interested to help market what we do have. Certainly make it easier for return visitors to enjoy downtown, and if you choose to drive and park, make it available. I, I would be happy to come back and discuss with you all the different strategies we're trying to do to make sure that every parking space available is filled. But, but I will be honest, that I'm not really prepared to outline all of that tonight.
Okay. Um, and then maybe another softball question for you, which is, if raising revenue is important on this, why do we discount the law, the monthly employee, um, parking so much less than the private?
That, that is a good point, certainly for further discussion. We proposed in the past that maybe we should be in greater alignment with other central business districts, even perhaps like downtown LA that charges eighteen to twenty-two times the month, the daily rate. Certainly San Francisco has aligned with those kind of goals where the monthly rate in public parking isn't that much different from the total of, the number of workdays in a, uh, the number of, uh, total workdays in a month at the maximum daily rate.
Okay. And I'll try to wrap it up with a couple more questions. Has there been any discussion in trying to increase utilization rates by, you know, maybe taking some street parking off, which might help us out with getting some bike lanes?
Um, we're, we're in dialogue, working with the mobility group. We're, we're at the onset of a curb allocation policy that would look at how to repurpose the curb for, for greater, uh, use by all modes, bicycles, delivery services, food pickup services. We've learned that, you know, the current meters, although they're old and breaking and hopefully, but will still be replaced, really are only used a little less than half the time because of the growth of ADA placards and the exemption of electric vehicles. They don't have to pay at the meter now, so we need to think of new strategies of how we use the curb in the future.
Great. Then, not questions, statements, I do agree with what I've heard tonight, that thirty minutes doesn't seem to help anybody for free, for free parking. And I question if three hours really is going to get me to a movie and a dinner. I think maybe you need to look a little harder at that. But thank you for your presentation.
Commissioner McKinnon?
Commissioner McKinnon, before you start, can I just make one clarification? I said something earlier that might have been misunderstood, and I just want to clarify it, that we are getting serious about our trip reduction. We've been serious about that for a long time. I thought we were just going to use another tool here today is what I meant to say.
So Commissioner Reese touched on it, but you talk about this as a budget strategy, and you say that you are a person, a shoepjes though.
Yes.
How does this contribute to better mobility in the city?
Well, well, certainly, um, you know, flat out, if a family of four were to come downtown by, um, big blue bus, they would encounter a fee of close to seven dollars for that entire family there and back again. Whereas if they're coming to downtown for the same purpose, uh, they can park for, uh, you know, maybe a fourth of that cost. So by aligning and starting to look at every opportunity we can to, to, to remove the incentive to drive, uh, we start to balance that playing field.
So shouldn't that be a discussion that we have when you're here and the big blue bus is here and everyone puts the cost of mobility on the table at the same time, rather than you coming and saying, this is what I'd like to do, I'd like to raise the fees for parking? And then my second point is, you currently say that the rate of parking is around sixty percent utility. You want to raise it to eighty-five to ninety percent.
Ideally, yes.
How does this do that?
Well, well, certainly, um, it doesn't directly, but what it does is it begins to plug some of the holes that get us there.
Like, how does it do that? You raise the price, that's a discouraging factor in economics.
Um, it, it may or may not. I'm not sure that, that charging that extra dollar for that first increment is going to really discourage folks parking in downtown.
I think I've used for you then. Commissioner Reese asked about curbside parking. If curbside parking was taken away, and in your words, repurposed, wouldn't that encourage a shift into the parking structures?
Well, ostensibly, if, if folks continue to drive and, and seek parking options, it would. Perhaps, um, you know, the, some other technologies coming forward that, that might force us into that situation anyways. If, if people continue to divers themselves of personal automobile use, for example, we might discover that the curb space is only, you know, pick-up and drop-off or, or public transit.
But won't that mean that your revenue will go down anyway because people won't be parking in the structures?
Well, I, I would hope that brains smarter than mine will find a way to monetize the curb in a different way.
Okay. So we've heard pretty clearly from Ms. Wilson here, and I've got some pretty scorching texts from some of the people that own property along the promenade, that they thought this was completely, utterly unacceptable at the wrong time. How would you answer that? They felt, in their words, blindsided by the presentation, I see, and I'm paraphrasing because you really don't want to hear what I say.
We presented this as one of many options back in two thousand and eighteen. It was not accepted at that time, particularly with the same argument, that, that it was perhaps inappropriate at that time and that we should wait. We're learning that our city budget is now experiencing, uh, perhaps, uh, a change in how we, we receive revenues and we may be experiencing a peak and may eventually see a gradual decline in revenues. So it seemed appropriate, since this measure had been introduced once before, to bring it up again as one measure, ostensibly driven by revenue, uh, opportunities, but secondarily because it is in alignment with our goals to reintroduce it.
So you are prepared to life, to look at license plate identification as a way of retrieving revenue?
Uh, we, um, well, but, let me answer that question this way. There's nothing in our current technology that prevents us from bringing it aboard. I think that we need to look at, you know, political sentiment and everything else to actually truly, you know, bring it in and turn it on.
So that's a double negative, which means yes.
Yes.
And finally, and I was really intrigued, what sort of car do you have to drive to drive through the barrier without incurring damage? Because there seems to be a lot of that going on.
Um, I think it takes more the behavior and the chutzpah of the driver. I think it takes more the behavior and the chutzpah of the driver toward the vehicle. I've literally been...
That's the sort of car I want.
Well, believe me, you don't want to suffer the damage. We do receive claims from folks that tailgate and all of a sudden discover they've got a new paint design on their roof. We decline those claims because it looks like we caught them trying to tailgate. But yeah, it's more the forcefulness of the driver than the vehicle.
Excellent. Thank you, Senator.
Actually, I have a question. I haven't talked yet. It's a quick one. Have you anticipated the usage changes, which I share with the increases, when you demolish Parking Structure 3?
Yes. In fact, that's one of the reasons we bring this forward. We currently supply 6,000 public parking spaces in the downtown core, with the demise of three and perhaps the loss of Lot 27 and a few others. We're looking at about, overall, about a little, a little under ten percent of that available parking going away. We suspect that we're going to have to raise prices accordingly if we don't want to exceed that.
See, that goes to my point. Doesn't it make sense for you to wait until Parking Structure 3 is gone and whatever the other thing happens before you actually look at the fee structure for the remaining parking structures?
And that's an excellent question. I appreciate that. The reason we're beginning this roadshow and, you know, having this discussion with all these deliberative bodies is that this, if it's brought forward, might be introduced with the July 1st, start of the fiscal year, but everything I'm hearing is that the Parking Structure 3 may close in September or October of this year, in which case then the parking structure is gone. I've closed it in effect at the end of summer or peak season. I need to prepare accordingly before, not after, the closure.
And I'm not sure that you know the answer to this. I'm assuming, just given that it's going to be affordable housing where Parking Structure 3 is, that there will not be land revenues for the city. Do you know that?
I don't know that.
Commissioner Landis.
So, and this, maybe it's a shift to discussion, but I would love to hear your answer to this, because I want to be fair. My sense, and I'm, my sense is that because of the budget projections related to the city, every single department in the city has been asked to find ways to save money, to increase revenue, and essentially to do its part to right, to balance the budget. Is that fair?
That's correct. Every department has been asked.
Right. So you obviously oversee a part of PCD that's extremely important to that, because we get a substantial amount of revenue from our parking.
Yes.
So would it be fair to say that the timing on this at the moment is driven somewhat by that budgetary concern, rather than, and I want to acknowledge that because it's an all-hands-on-deck moment?
Right. To be honest, yes.
Yeah. Okay. So my, I think what a number of us have been asking, a number of us have been asking is a sense of worry that the desire to solve one budget problem over here could create another budget problem over there. And I'm wondering whether there are ways in which you see with this, based on what you've heard from us and others, whether there are ways that you think we ought to be thinking about how to integrate these conversations? How to make sure that a conversation about the use of our curbs or our parking structures, revenue from parking timing, doesn't accidentally cause, say, a knock-on effect that we heard from downtown Santa Monica, which is a revenue hit or dissuading? So help us think through...
My guess is this is not his, David actually has a response.
Thank you.
Okay. But I, yeah, because we're going to hear more about this over the next few months.
We are. And as you said, Commissioner Landis, this is before you tonight because of the budget process, and it's a new process that was just introduced. As you said, every department was asked to look at ways where we could increase revenue or save money. Those are the ideas that go forward to the Budget Subcommittee. That committee reviews the applications and makes a recommendation to the city manager, and then the city manager will make a recommendation to council under the budget. So, you know, because it was, this wasn't a typical kind of change that originated out of mobility or out of parking, where we did a thorough analysis of all the details and brought that forward with economics studies and everything else, this was something that came out of the budget process. It went to the Budget Committee the end of last year.
Yes.
So October, November, and then it needs to be presented to council in time for the July 1st budget. So it's a pretty quick turnaround. A lot of the issues that were raised tonight, I think, are very good questions, and some of these other things might need to be considered. And it could certainly be an appropriate recommendation of the Planning Commission that if this type of idea were to go forward, these, you know, these are the other things that would need to be considered. So, you know, this is a recommendation from the Commission, really, to the Budget Committee and the City Manager. So I think you can explain, you know, if not now, you know, why or when, and if not, with the information you have, what information would be needed in order for you to support this?
Right. I'm asking because, and I want to make, this is because it relates to the next item.
Right.
We, you know, Henry, you cited the Vancouver study, which argued that parking rates and economic activity, retail economic activity, were relatively independent of parking.
Correct.
Right? We also will hear, right, when we hear concerns about bike lanes and removing parking in the next item, but we know that there's data also from Vancouver that says making businesses accessible to cyclists actually raises their economic turnover. So in the interest of data-driven holistic approaches to revenue, I think that's what I'm getting at, is how do we, how do we as a Commission, how do you, how do we support a process that puts the pieces together, rather than siloing and then having to fix it in two years when it doesn't turn out the way we thought?
I guess, let me just interject. I think above everything, we have absolutely no idea of the economic impact of what is proposed.
I agree.
And so I think it would be really not wise of us to proceed with this without knowing the impact on the sales tax revenues for the city. I don't know how thriving Vancouver's retail sector is. I suspect anything's better than here. So clearly, the economic impacts of what's being proposed on the downtown are unknown, and they're not going to be known tonight. So from my standpoint, I think this is premature. I'd rather see what happens when Parking Structure 3 comes down and the utilization of this structure and a fee structure based on what likely be a much higher utilization factor for the downtown structures. So I am, I think this is the wrong time to be doing this, and there's not enough information to do it.
That's a motion. Consider it.
Oh, I think we're in discussion now, Henry, so you might want to sit down.
Henry, thank you.
I appreciate your time. And again, part of what we're doing is having the dialogue in public, because many factors come to bear. And certainly, you know, I will comment that we appreciate your time. You've given us a lot of good input. We have the ongoing conversation with DTSM and the Chamber. We ostensibly fight to stay out of the silos, because the closer we work together on all these solutions, the better for all of us. Thank you for your...
Thank you very much, Henry.
All right. It's open for discussion. With my keynote address.
Well, I, I'm, I think I'm in agreement with where I believe the Commission is going. It seems a little premature. Again, philosophically, I'm all for raising prices on parking to try to drive people out of their cars. I do find it ironic that it was brought up, I guess, a year or two years ago, and people said it's not the right time. I do think that something like this, and so I guess that leads me to a question of when will it ever be the right time to take people away from their favorite mechanical instrument? Or at least de-emphasize it. But with that said, I think this should be part of the discussion with Promenade 3.0, and I would, I would support a recommendation that says it should be part of Promenade 3.0, and you should look at a very holistic approach from the standpoint of, if we make a little extra money from the parking, will that impact the overall revenue, which I do see the downtown area as an economic engine that gives, affords us a lot of benefits of living in Santa Monica, and I really don't want to give those up. So I am torn between my desire for reduced trips, that I would like to maintain some economic viability, and I don't think it's, I think retail is suffering everywhere. I don't think we're suffering worse than anybody else. I think it's just part of retail sales, where we'd rather just click a button and have it delivered to our doorstep.
Commissioner McKinnon, do you have comments?
My overall reaction is I'd like to charge for parking everywhere, and I'd like it to be a dynamic charge. I'd like to remove curbside parking so that we can run a bike lane along Second Street through the city and encourage more people into the city. But the whole agenda tonight is about mobility and how we move people in and out of the city. I'd like to guarantee that the bus can get people in there. But if you go to the promenade at the moment, it's a complete shambles. Half of it's closed, bits of it are dug up. It's really not in great shape. There are boards across all sorts of things. And to come in at that time and say, and on top of that, we now intend to charge you a little more, but we don't have alternate ways of getting you here on top of what we've already done, strikes me as a good way to cut off sales tax revenues and do exactly the thing that you say you don't want to do, which is to cut revenue from the budget. And so, take away from one, take away from the other, that's not a good outcome. So if you'd centered this on mobility, and if you'd centered this on access to the city, I think you'd be in a stronger shape. Now, the interesting thing is, you can go back two years to your report of two years ago, which I've got here. You can go back four years when Mr. Sal came with Jason over there and presented, and we asked for dynamic pricing and various other things at that time, and the same response came from the city. Now it's not the right time. Just price the parking according to what we've recommended to you. And so this is an ongoing episode. Hopefully, it won't be two years before you come back and we get more holistic approach to how we're going to price parking in the city and get access to it, but I do not think this is a good time to do what you're suggesting tonight.
Commissioner Landis?
I'd like to be a little, I agree with the direction of the Commission, but I want to be a little bit more specific about where I think the Promenade 3.0 issue fits. In the task force, we spent a lot of time talking about where people are on the promenade, how much time they spend on the promenade, and when they are on the promenade. So when we're talking about, when we're talking about this conversation, I wouldn't just like to see this go with Promenade 3.0. I'd actually like to give the specific direction that our parking pricing, essentially, we should be thinking about what behaviors we want to incentivize from people and when. The parking revenue that we're talking about is a, you know, the difference here is a tiny percentage of the budget. We will not save the budget on these numbers. We will not hurt the budget on these numbers, but we will have an impact on the vibrancy of the promenade, and I would love to see that, those data streams connecting to each other, so that a policy can be, and it may involve demand pricing, it may involve license plate or some other identifier tracking, it may involve, so that we can distinguish between residents and visitors, it may involve, it may involve changes to our pricing, validations for what, for whom, and I'd love to see a conversation about the five-dollar evening parking, which, which lost a lot. I, my family, and I will say, my family and I, we bike downtown, we bus downtown, and we drive downtown, at different times for different purposes. And I also would add that we, our behavior, our relationship with the promenade is very different from someone who is a tourist or a visitor who's come for the whole day. And I'd love to see more attention paid to the differences in the who, so that, again, the incentives and the behaviors can be managed. We should be incentivized to take the bus more and to bike more. But at the moment, the bus isn't reliable, and on the weekends, you can't get there from here if you're a resident of Santa Monica. That's a true statement about the big blue bus. I'm sorry to say, but it is. We're lucky we live near the age. So the promenade is accessible to us, but that's not true for a lot of people. So I'd love to see these conversations brought together and then come back. It may be that you're going to ask for more revenue. It may be that you're going to be, it's going to be two hours free parking and then fifty bucks an hour after that. I hope not. But, you know, come back, but if it's based in data and leads to the outcomes that we need, then that's...
Thank you. Commissioner Fesko.
In general, I agree with the general discussion of the Commission, and I'm really wary of negatively impacting the fragile state of the promenade at this point, when it's, there's so much change going on in terms of how it's direction right now. What Sean just said about you can't get there from here on the big blue bus is, has always been a big issue for me. I really feel, and we will discuss this in our next discussion, or I will certainly be bringing up, this idea that we're asking people to get out of their cars, and the options we're giving them really are walking and biking, and we need more, better, reliable, quick local transit. The big blue bus that goes by my house never stops at the stop that it's supposed to stop, drives right by. I stand there, and it literally goes past. Plus, I can get an orange flag and see if I can get it to stop next time, but, you know, it's just not an alternative. If you have a car, you're not going to, you know, it's just not working for a lot of people. So basically, I say, wait, and we need to talk about a lot of different mobility things if we're going to leverage our parking so that it's right-priced and gets people out of their cars.
Thank you. Commissioner Fonda, Fonda Bernadette?
Are you not speaking? Okay. Okay. The general sense of the Commission, I believe, is to conclude that this is probably not the best time to be doing this, and that we aren't really clear about the economic impacts of doing it. And I've said before, I think that looking at the impact of taking down Parking Structure 3 needs to happen before we look at the fee structure and be done with a recognition of what's going on on the promenade, which, from what I'm hearing, is only going to get worse. So thank you very much, Henry. I know you'll be back. We'll be here. Not in this room, but we'll be here. So does anyone else want a closing remark that's short? Those were our closing, okay. Thank you very much, Henry. It's a nice presentation.
Huh?
There's no motion. There's a recommendation, and the recommendation is not to do it now. Okay. Fancy.
Okay, good. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Nice to see you all. Hope you're well. Is it not on? Or should I lift, maybe I need to lift it up. Okay. Does that sound better? Great. Good evening. We are here, and I say "we," some folks from the Mobility Division here with us tonight to talk to you about the Bike and pedestrian plan implementation. The folks that are with me tonight are Joe San Clemente, who is a principal transportation planner in charge of our capital projects group, Colleen Stahl, who you know, who is in charge of our transportation demand management group, and Jason Kleeger, who is in charge of permitting and other policy issues. So we will tag-team tonight a little bit, partly so that I can continue to speak, because my voice is a little raspy. But I will start off and just talk a little bit about some of the major metrics that we want to present to you tonight. I mean, our major focus is to present to you kind of where we are measuring and what we're seeing in terms of trends, and then hopefully you'll indulge us a little bit in getting to tell you a little more detail about a couple of topics. One is about the take-it-friendly road campaign. Another is about the shared mobility program that's been underway. And then at the end, we'll talk a little bit about protected bikeways, which is looking forward. So that's the general arc. Similar to the report that we gave you, this presentation is organized in terms of mode shift, safety, and infrastructure, which is also the way that the metrics in both the Bike Action Plan and the pedestrian action plan are organized. So we wanted to sort of stay true to that organizational scheme. So as you know, we have kind of a number of major driving factors for us. These have been their plans, Bike Plan adopted in 2011, Head Plan adopted in 2016, and the Vision Zero Action Plan in 2018? Seventeen? Thank you. And they have, they continue to guide our work daily. You know, we take them out. They guide our, they guide our practices, they guide our projects, and they guide our programs. So they continue to be very valuable documents to us that we use on a very regular basis. The sort of North Stars of many of them are on the slide in terms of kind of the major ways in which they sort of guide our work, but they are chock full of real specifics that we use to organize. But they're not alone in that the city has no shortage of other efforts that it has undertaken. And I think one of the things that's unique this year, when I come to talk to you about this, is that there have been a number of additional plans and... But the bad news is that we have a lot of work to do on our transportation sector. So, that is now guiding us as well with the three metrics of reducing local trips that are driven and increasing commute trips by transit and electrification. Similarly, a number of things have been going on within the city with regard to overarching performance management. And, you know, the framework for the Sustainable City Well-Being was adopted by council. It is organized into major outcome areas and sub outcome areas. Mobility was added in the final draft as a sub outcome to Place and Planet. So, now, we are reporting regularly on...there's six metrics, or I think there's seven total that we are reporting on regularly. Now, the thing, I don't have a slide for it, but is no less important, is that combined with this framework is an internal process to the city about citywide performance management in which we are now also reporting regularly on our standard, on our baseline activities and services that we offer. And that's a little different than the action plans. The action plans are aspirational things where we want to change what we're doing to get to a different outcome. And a lot of the performance management work that's going on inside City Hall, the 24 metrics that we have to report on quarterly now are more about our day-to-day bread-and-butter services that we offer the public. And those are...we don't really ever come to talk to you about them, but they're significant and is the majority of the way that we're organized, which is to offer counter service, to do thousands of plan checks every year, and to, you know, regulate our employers every year, and a number of different bread-and-butter things. So, I give that to you as just a bit of context in terms of, these action plans now are nested within many other different ways in which the city is measuring performance around the bread-and-butter things that we do, as well as our aspirational things that we do. So, enough talking. So, where did we get with biking and walking in the recent past? Now, this is commute mode only. This is from the American Community Survey. It is residents, so people who live in Santa Monica who go to a job, and how do they go to that job? And what we've seen is that we have seen, you know, there's noise in the data from year to year because sample sizes are small and things, but we are seeing a sort of slow but steady progress, right? We're seeing percentage point increases in walking and biking over time, which, while we'd love to see those in double-digit numbers, is not insignificant. We have always been higher than regional average significantly when it comes to bike mode share, which is in LA County about 1%. We've always been, you know, we started, you know, around 6. We're going up to 7. Oh, sorry. We started at 3.5, we're going up to 4.5. So, while I'd love for these lines to be steeper, they are consistent and they are going up. We know that the commute is just about 20% of the trips that we make, so we also like to look at other things. The way that we have measured that in the past is the Resident Household Travel Survey. It is something we did in 2016 and 2017. We have not repeated it since then, which is why I do not have a slide for you about what that looks like. What it was in 2017 is that approximately 17% of trips in the city were made, resident trips in the city, were made walking, and approximately 6.5 were made on bicycle. So, we aspire to do that again this year. It's a laborious and somewhat costly process, so we didn't have a chance to do it in the last couple of years. We hope to do it again in 2020 so that we could report to you again next year on that. So, we looked at what we could give you as a proxy. This is...so, we thought, well, one way to do this is to look at a spot in the city and see what's happening in that spot in the city. And what you see in those gray bars is what we get from what we call the eco-counter. It is the induction loops that are in Main Street, right outside City Hall, that have the feedback sign that you see that counts bikes as they go by. And this is the monthly data since the date that was installed, so January 2017 till now. So, each bar represents a month. And you can see the seasonal shifts, right? Lower in the cooler, wetter wintertime, rising up to July and back down. And if you look closely, you can sort of see, you know, the arcing actually going down, right? So, you look at 2017, 2018's close to 17, a little lower, 2019 even a little bit lower than that. And we looked at that, and we went, "Well, that's strange," because that's not the perception that we have looking out of the street. Certainly, we look out at that window. David looks at that street segment every day and can attest to the fact that it is, you know, chock-full of people in different modes. And so, we thought, "Well, let's look at another data source." And so, what we added in orange is actually...so, those loops don't collect scooter data because the scooters are not enough metal to set them off. So, we added the scooter data from the data feed we get from the scooter companies when that became available in November 2018. And you can see, once you add that in, that we are seeing a shift. Now, some of those shifts are going to be from people who are biking to scooters. I mean, this is not super clean, super squeaky data, but it is showing a general trend that while we may not be seeing the particular mode of cycling going up in this particular measurement, we are seeing an overall trend. And that squares with some of the other things that I wrote a little bit in the report about the overall citywide transportation counts. Those are similarly increased quite a bit once you start to add scooters and some of our other new devices. So, that's sort of our best way to paint that sort of general picture for you. It's a mixed picture. We'd love to be going faster, but it is nice to see that we're staying steady. And I think it's important to note that staying steady doesn't happen by accident. It's...we are like any other place in that people could decide that they don't like to walk and bike anymore, and they could stop. So, the continued encouragement and facilitation of those trips, I think, is paying off through those numbers. So, if you'll indulge me, I want to talk a little bit about some of the ways in which we continue to encourage that type of behavior. A big one that is new to the city that we have now institutionalized is Coast, the Open Streets event. I bring it up because it's something we didn't ever do before, 2015, 2016, and now it's become a regular part of an annual offering in the city. This year, we had an estimated 60,000 people that participated. Of those, 60% said they'd never been before, so that was good. 70% of those people...there was a survey that was done. Sorry. A survey was done of participants. There were 600 people surveyed, and 70% of those people came without their car. So, that's good. Most people were walking and biking to the event. Some people took transit. But most people also said it exposed them to something different. It exposed them to something new, and that was sort of what we were going for. The idea is to create a place to celebrate sustainability, mobility, and creativity. And we had a really full offerings of events, of workshops and activities as well as performances. So, a little bit about the Shared Mobility Pilot, and then I'll pass it off to Colleen. But we are embarking on the second of our Shared Mobility Pilot programs. This has, I think, been the singular biggest disruption in, you know, our world in the last couple of years. It has rubbed a lot of our attention and work, but as we showed with the counts, it's meaningful, right? It's leading some people to try different things, which is good. So, we had an initial pilot. We worked with four operators. We're still working with them. Pilot's going to be extended into May, and we are proceeding with a second pilot based on council direction that would really focus in on some key areas, particularly safety and equity and accessibility of the devices. I think it's just important to note, we saw, you know, 2.5 million trips in a year. We're easily over 3 million by now. It's leveling off a bit, right? So, the initial enthusiasm is starting to show patterning, and it's not on a sort of continuous growth curve, but that's a significant chunk. You know, when you start talking to those types of numbers, those are lots of trips being taken on these devices. We also know from surveying the users that half of them are people that would have been in a car otherwise. There is some walk displacement. So, you know, some of that is displacing an active mode, but getting trips off, vehicle trips off the street has been positive. And that people are using them for lots of different types of trips, a third work, then, you know, some for fun, eating out, going to and from home and so forth. So, lots of different use cases. And the city has been very, investing a lot of energy into providing the complimentary safety education as well as facilities to make that possible. So, I say disruptive because, you know, we are actively trying to make this work, and that has required us to change what we are prioritizing to do and how we're doing it and letting people know how to behave safely. And last but not least, Breeze. So, it's not hard to tell what Shared Mobility did to Breeze ridership. And, you know, it's not surprising. People liked Breeze. It's fun to ride the shiniest, newest thing on the road. It's fun to get on that and to try it out. Breeze is no longer the shiniest, newest thing on the road, and so, we are, you know, actively looking at what to do with that. I think we talked with council about this, and they did endorse the fact that having some sort of public reliable option is still very meaningful. And so, we're looking at how to do that with the least impact to the budget. You had a good, robust discussion about the budget. There isn't a lot of room at the moment to substantially subsidize a service, and so, we're looking carefully at what we might be able to get in terms of an affordable system that is not just affordable if you're income-qualified, but is affordable if you're just someone who doesn't have a ton of money and you want to use this as a way to get around. And as the rates per utilization go up, our concern about it going out of the reach of people for day-to-day transportation purposes is rising as well. So, one of the things that we feel is important for us to chart is a path forward that makes it something that can be used easily and readily by people of all incomes on a regular basis, so it is a real transportation option. So, we don't have an answer here. We're going to be including in the request for operators that we're releasing in the spring, a request for people to offer up their best package of what could be an affordable, reliable option. And we will, subsequent to getting those proposals back, be looking to whether we need to do an additional solicitation for someone to continue to run an even more affordable program. So, we'll be happy to update you on that as we find out more, but we are learning in real time as that goes forward. So, with that, I'm going to pass off to Colleen to talk a bit about some of the other sort of major work efforts.
Okay, so I'm going to talk about some of our programs that we have in place to help us achieve that behavior change, and then Jason and Joseph can talk about infrastructure and some of our other efforts. So, we have the Go Samo TMO that you guys may recall was launched the same year as XO. So, the TMO is entering into its fourth year of operations, and they're primarily designed to help residents, visitors, but their real focus is employees, helping them with their mobility options. So, in the past year, they worked with over 150 employers, and those employers that they worked with with repeat occurrences, who they met with more than once, those employers saw that their employees' drive-alone rate dropped. So, the percent of employees that green-commuted from those employers increased from 37% to actually it was 41%. I know my slide says 40. And so, we had set a goal for the TMO of achieving a 50% non-drive-alone rate. So, they're getting closer, especially with those employers that they are able to engage on a repeat performance, where they're able to talk with them multiple times and do events and outreach. They're really able to see that behavior change with their employees. So, the TMO participated in over 50 events, but by far, the most popular event that they did was the Go Samo Achievement Awards. People in LA love getting awards. I don't think we really understood how much people love getting awards. So, the way this awards program works is you just submit your annual TDM plan to the city, just like you normally do. You don't have to fill out a separate application or anything like that. You just submit your TDM plan to the city. We score it, and then we give out these achievement awards every October to those employers who are seeing the greatest success. So, in the month of October, we have a big spread in the Daily Press. We go to council, we have a presentation, there's a blog post, but then everybody loves going to the luncheon, and then the employers get to share best practices with each other, and they get to see, "Oh, what's working over here? What's...oh, you're a tech company. What's working for you?" So, it's a great networking opportunity as well. And this was something that came out of our Advisory Board. They're like, "You know, we think employers want recognition for the good work that they're doing." Like, some of them are really trying hard, but they're not being recognized for it. And it has been tremendously successful. The TMO also can move at a pace where they keep up with all the changing technologies in the mobility sphere, and they're able to bring those changing programs and services to our employers. So, this is an example of a purple happy hour, something fun, event that they did with Waze Carpool. So, they worked with Boston Properties and Waze Carpool. They went out to Colorado Center that has a lot of major employers. They were able to get employers from, you know, Hulu and Kite Pharma, all those employees together to network and see if they could form carpools. So, that's one of the types of events they can do. They've also had a lot of success. Once they're able to bring a program or a product or service to one employer, then other employers say, "Oh, wait, I could maybe do that." The TMO had been trying to get one employer to bite on this concept of like micro-transit, providing shuttles for their commuters to places that aren't well-served by transit. And once we were able to get Kite Pharma to start offering commuter shuttles to their employees, then Hulu, that's located right next door, they're like, "Oh, we saw those employees lined up and getting on those shuttles, and those employees are loving it. Let's try that with our employees." And so, now Hulu at Colorado Center in the same curb cut is providing shuttles. So, now, you've got five shuttles pulling up and taking employees to places like Topanga that are more challenging to get to via transit. So, it's been nice for the TMO to kind of get these things up and running, and then other people to copy that and start it at their own company. And we attached the TMO annual report to the staff report, so I just covered a little bit of what they did, but happy to answer questions that are, if you have any questions about the information that was in their annual report. And I also wanted to talk about our Safe Rested School program. So, you guys are probably familiar with our Safe Rested School program. This year, one of the things that we did was different, is we partnered with the Vision Zero and Friendly Road project that Jason's going to talk about, and I see Sean's maybe taking a picture of his wife in the presentation. So, we partnered with them and created a really highly visible marketing campaign. So, we had the lawn sign. There were ads on big blue buses. There were banners over the street and at our elementary schools that really dovetailed with our Friendly Road campaign. Also, during Pride Month, we did one of...we do five kidical mass events every year. This year, we did a rainbow ride during Pride Month that was a real hit with our community. So, we continue to do our Safe Rested School outreach events that you're familiar with. We also do Bike It, Walk It twice a year. So, that happens every May and every October, and it's become this really fun competition between the schools, because what we do is we give a check to the PTA that gets the greatest number of kids to bike or walk to school. So, that really gets the schools to engage with us, so they're really interested partners. And then, that gives us an opportunity to go to the school board twice a year and present a check and talk about Safe Rested School and the importance of that. And so, yes, this is a picture of Grant Elementary School, who has taken the check away from McKinley for the last three years under the leadership of Zuffan O'Landres. That's all that I have to progress.
So, with the adoption of the Pedestrian Action Plan in 2016, the city committed to Vision Zero, which is a commitment to eliminating fatal and severe injury crashes from our streets within 10 years, so by 2026. In order to set us in the path of realizing that goal, we did an analysis a few years back of 11 years' worth of crash data to find out where the hotspots were. And so, what you see here is a map that shows our priority network in Santa Monica in blue and 10 priority intersections in the blue dots that are really where we're focusing our efforts in terms of infrastructure, and we'll hear more about that later. Just to tell you what else you're seeing on the map here, if you haven't seen it before, in yellow, those are the streets that the city of Los Angeles has designated as their high-injury network, which is a corollary. And then, in orange, we've designated a corridor along PCH where we want to work with Caltrans to improve the safety along that corridor, but we don't have... But we don't have all of the control over that facility and so we've just shown it's slightly different. But what we found in doing this analysis is that 10% of our roads account for 50% of our fatal and severe injury crashes. And so it starts to make this really big, challenging problem a little bit more tangible and provides a pathway towards realization. So what are the numbers showing? What you see here is bike crashes. On the left, we have all crashes and then on the right is just the fatal and severe. And each data point is a five-year rolling average. And we do that because in a city like Santa Monica where we don't have a lot of these types of incidents, fortunately, some years will be a little bit higher and other years will be really low. And so this type of analysis smoothes out the data so that we can really see what the trends are showing us. So what we see here is that in, all crashes have gone down and a nice trend to 105 in the last year that we have full data for, which was 2018. Seviors are down to five and we have 0.4 fatalities per year. So slightly an upward trend in the fatal and severe over the last couple of years, but down from the 2012 data point. And then these are pedestrian-involved collisions. So all crashes are at 86, again a downward trend over the time period, not as significant as the downward trend for bicycles, but down just the same. Seviors are, were at nine in 2018, slightly up from 2012 numbers. And the fatalities were down to 2.2, which held constant from the 2012. Further implementing aspects of the Pedestrian Action Plan include the regular interdepartmental review of crash reports. Prior to, about two years ago, this was not something that happened. And so now we have quarterly cadence where representatives from various departments meet to review the fatal and severe crashes that occurred in the prior quarter and identify countermeasures and next steps. We also have, in the Mobility Division, just been granted access to the software that the police department uses to maintain all of their records. It doesn't provide us full abilities that the police department reserves, but it'll allow us to begin to do some additional investigation and data analysis so that we can be more nimble and more responsive to what we're seeing. And then we've also continued to, or we've begun and continued to implement leading pedestrian intervals, which there's a photograph of on the screen whereby pedestrians get a three-to-seven second head start to enter and cross the intersection before cars get to green light so that pedestrians are more visible, they're more established, and that has shown to have significant crash reduction. We're now up to 53 locations in the city with LPIs. A big aspect of the Vision Zero goal and achieving that is an education and outreach campaign. And locally, we have branded that Take the Friendly Road. And after a preview in 2018 where we needed to get out some much-needed messaging about scooters, safety and etiquette, we launched the Friendly Road campaign in earnest in 2019. We employed various tactics to make the community aware of the Vision Zero commitment, the ways that they can be safe on the road and the ways that the city is working to enhance their safety. So over the summer of 2019, we attended over a dozen events, including National Night Out where presidents and visitors made safety pledges on hearts that were hung up on clothespins. We also through all this outreach generated over 900 emails on our monthly newsletter. We used digital and traditional media to get messages out to people on the roads. Here are a few examples, including a specially branded and wrapped train on Expo Line that had scooter messaging. We partnered with the Wilshire Safety Study and put banners all along Wilshire Boulevard to let people know about that effort. We did posts on social media, spread in Seascape, and we also had an interactive survey map online where people could report issues to the city, areas of concern, areas where they're noticing certain bad behavior. And through that effort, we received over 540 comments on that tool. All told, we had over 16 million impressions from all of our media in the streets. Another tactic we employed was providing messages to folks as they're out on the roads and in those key moments where they might be traveling or they might be about to make a bad move. So we, for example, stenciled Stop Look Wave, which is kind of part of the campaign messaging at the 10 priority intersections from the map that I showed you in the beginning. We partnered with the Safe Rest to School campaign, as Colleen mentioned, to distribute almost 2,000 lawn signs to residents, to display their support to their neighbors and to other people using the roadway. We put the logo on the back of over 50,000 parking hang tags that are issued annually by the city as a reminder to drivers as they're getting into and out of their car, hey, remember there are other people out there. And we also worked with local construction sites to put some banners up on their fencing, which they donated, and also put advertisements on the sides of the Big Belly Trash Cans located on priority corridors in the city. So how did we do? A survey that was conducted in 2019 by the city asked residents and visitors at various locations like grocery stores and shopping centers if they were aware of the city's Vision Zero commitment. One in seven, or 14%, said they were aware of it, including 23% of females, 18% of residents, 19% of people under 30. Also, three-fourths of the people surveyed agreed with the statement, "I am aware of my speed as I play a part in making Santa Monica's roads safer and friendlier for all." Looking ahead to the upcoming summer engagement season, we are going to further focus on our partnership with Safe Rest to School and reaching children and their parents. We're going to look at additional in-street messaging and also combating a trend that we're seeing of scootering under the influence. And we've just applied to a grant from the state to get some money to, from that effort. So I'm going to pass it along.
So moving on to infrastructure. So both the Ped Plan and the Bike Plan have time-delineated aspirations for different infrastructure projects. So we've gone through and summarized kind of where we're at on the Bike Action Plan, five-year and 20-year. We've seen some projects move from the construction phase into the complete phase since we last talked to you. And we've moved from about 20%, 22% in the not-started down to 20%. So you're seeing projects progressing up through the not-started, being designed, in construction and finally complete. 20-year has a similar trend, although there aren't additional ones that have been started since we last reported to you. But I think that is reflective of the fact that the 20-year projects tended to be the much larger, much more expensive, much more challenging to get off the ground type of projects. And so you know, they do tend to take multiple years to deliver, particularly because we rely so heavily on outay grant funds and the multiple processes that it takes to release those funds are fairly time-consuming and slow. So the good news is we're making progress and moving things up the chain on the Bike Plan. On the Pedestrian Action Plan, it's a similar story, moving things from the design phase primarily up into the complete phase since we last reported on that. Many of the five-year projects were ones that we were able to secure grant funding for fairly early on. And so they, many of them are in this process of going through approvals to get final design. And Joe will talk a little bit about some of them that are in process right now. We've had some pretty good, high-visibility completions. And not to steal Joe's thunder, but probably we'll see quite a bit in the upcoming year and one-year and two-year timeframe. The things that you see and that people comment the most on are the green lanes. This is 19 miles of lanes that we had that we painted green. It was a grant we had gotten from Metro and then we gap-filled on the shortage with money from the scooter companies. The reaction to these is phenomenally positive, just absolutely positive. And so we're very pleased that it has given everyone, including everyone using the road, a better sense of organization and where they should be. The Edison Safe Rest to School project, last time we talked to you, is still in the design and outreach process. It has since been constructed. It's a project that was tied up, it's sort of Edison Safe Rest to School and Mango at the same time, in that it implemented improvements at Kansas and Stewart, along Kansas, along the south side of Edison Language Academy, as well as then across on the other side of Cloverfield at Dorchester and 22nd Street. So it has quite a number of different spot locations where it made crossing improvements that are being well-received by the community. One of the practices that has changed also since we were last with you is we've consolidated our mobility team with engineering and planning are now in one integrated team. And just as of July, we added the striping and marking crews to PCD. They had been in public work, so now we have a fairly nimble delivery process coming from ideation through to things that only require paint and bollards and signs. So we have the ability to deliver those more quickly, which I think is evidenced in some changes. You saw the Stewart Street, so Stewart had a road diet from four lanes down to two with a center turn lane and bike lanes on either side. That will be followed up, knock on wood, with the Stewart Street Protected Bike Way that Carlos and Joe are working on right now. Similarly, we took some opportunistic moves at Colorado 14th to add a little segment of Protected Bike Way when Big Blue Bus notified us that they wanted to close their bus stop and 31st Street. So we're trying to sort of be both long-term vision driven towards delivery of defined projects as well as opportunistic and nimble as opportunities arise. Smaller, less expensive, but partnered with a local community advocate project we did in the last year, the Willmont Walk Loop. Adopt a Walk is a locally-run organization that wants to promote walking amongst people of all ages and abilities, recognizing that a one-mile walk is a really, really, really long walk if you don't walk often. And so Malin Svensson, who runs Adopt a Walk, we partnered with her and developed a one-mile loop that is, has a map, start as well as some identifying signage along the way and some motivational quotes to help you finish. And she is doing regular walks. In fact, I think has been coming up this Saturday where she invites people to come and walk with her on the loop. This is a model that could be repeated in other places and we have gotten some requests from other neighborhood groups that would like to see it. And with that, I'll pass it back to Joe, who's going to talk about Wilshire, since you know him from that hit, and also some of our look-ahead projects.
Hi, good evening, everyone. As you may remember, we were here just back in October to talk about the Wilshire Boulevard Safety Study. And just a quick refresher, this really all originated a couple of years ago after we created the High Priority Network through the Vision Zero Program, where Wilshire Boulevard stood out as pretty much the priority in the network for the top 10 locations based on severe injury and fatal crashes. Occurred on Wilshire Boulevard and really a significant portion of the street segments were on Wilshire Boulevard, which is why we went after a grant proactively to get some funding, to take a detailed look at that corridor so that we could come up with a targeted implementation plan to address issues along that corridor. We're in the final stages of that effort. It's been a very detailed, year-long effort and we are developing our final report. Currently, it's mostly complete and we'll be presenting that to council on February 11th. And the goal of this effort is to come out with phased implementation and really not wait for the most important improvements. We do believe that we can deliver some targeted priority improvements through low-cost measures that can be deployed quickly to help resolve some of the largest issues that are out there and help address some of the major concerns. One of the biggest concerns out there is really pedestrians are having a hard time crossing the street and we're seeing a lot of conflicts at the unsignaled intersections, particularly vehicles that are either traveling across Wilshire Boulevard or turning left from the side streets. We also have a good plan for how we're going to look at funding opportunities as we move ahead. And there are some other more detailed evaluations that are going to come out of that effort that we do want to advance very quickly at the conclusion of the study beyond some of these low-cost deployments. And those include a detailed curb use management plan to look at how the curb is being used and how that impacts safety along the corridor, as well as looking at lighting along the corridor and what types of lighting improvements need to be made out there to help low-light condition We currently have 24 different infrastructure projects that are underway that are at various stages of whether they're currently funded or in the planning or design or construction. And I think that one of the things that's changed the last couple of years with the Vision Zero Program is we've started to take a look at the ones that have already been programmed to see if there are opportunities to take a more intense look at safety in terms of where are severe injury and fatal crashes happening, where do these projects relate to that network? And as we're in the early stages of plan and design, are there opportunities to address some of these safety concerns as we're designing some of these projects? And so we've integrated some of the work that Jason's mentioned about getting crash data, working with police, really taking a look at that network to see how we might resolve some of those issues. Some of the projects that you're going to be seeing coming in the next year, on the right-hand side, the green, I'm going to go backwards to construction, over to kind of the startup phase, because these are the things that you're going to see in the next year. We have two wayfinding projects that are coming. One is the dynamic parking wayfinding to help motorists get more conveniently to those parking garage structures. There's also a first last mile wayfinding project that will help pedestrians and transit riders and people on bikes be able to get to and from those train stations to make those important connections. The North Beach path improvements, we have an Olympic sidewalk project that's going to be going into construction this coming year. We'll build the sidewalk where there is none today, opposite from Bergamot Station between 26th Street and Stewart Street. And in building up some of the work that Colleen's group's doing through the Safe Rest to School Program, taking those walk audits that they did along four different schools, John Adams, Will Rogers, Lincoln and Roosevelt, we're really, we've designed and will be implementing safety enhancements for pedestrians and bicycles. And we've taken a more detailed look at some of the curb use and pickup and drop-off activities along those schools and that's going to be going out to bid for construction in the next month or two. And we hope to get into construction this summer, that's what we're hoping for. As for design, there are 10 active projects in there. And I think that one of the things I'll point out, you'll see that there are some projects that are highlighted in sort of that gold color. They're not all white. And I think these are where we tried to find some opportunities to add some additional features to these projects or take some opportunity to create projects that could be embedded with other efforts that are ongoing. For example, 23rd Street and Broadway is part of the Public Works Annual Reviving, Resurfacing Program. We've identified opportunities to do bicycle enhancements such as Protected Bike Ways along 23rd Street and along sections of Broadway. These are currently in early design stages that we're looking to help advance these as those get in so that, once we put the new pavement down, there's the new features that go with it so we don't have to change it later. It all goes down in one application. We're also proactively taking a look at Protected Bike Way segments throughout the city where, for example, we might have a bike lane that is adjacent to a curb lane but with no parking. But those are the types of facilities where you see that those bike lanes can get easily blocked and we think that there could be an opportunity to put in flex posts and paint through low-cost options to provide some quick implementation of these protected facilities and we're evaluating various segments throughout the city currently. Moving over into the valuation phase, I've spoken about Wilshire Boulevard, but we've also taken a deep dive on the other high priority locations in the network where we've got detailed crash data and we're in the early stages of really a problem identification to figure out what we might be able to do in the short term and then what other types of things might need to be programmed in the future capital improvement program in future budget years. We just launched a Safe Rest to Senior We just launched a Safe Route Senior Program, just kicked off in this last month, it will be ramping up in the next several months. And we are going to be initiating a Protected Bike Way study very soon. Actually, the funding that's tied to it has to be completed by the summer, and that's going to start to outline our strategy of where we build these Protected Bike Way facilities, which I'm going to talk about a little bit more in depth. Meanwhile, in the startup phase, there are five other projects that are either just are initiating, or that are currently in the capital improvement program budget that will be starting in the next, in the coming months. One of those, for example, is a Protected Bike Way project on Ocean Avenue between Colorado Esplanade and California Incline, and that's something that we, the design will be initiating this summer. So Protected Bike Ways, I want to focus on that just a little bit. Here's a picture of, you know, a car inside a bike lane, and this is one of the types of things that happens when you don't have these protected facilities. And, you know, overall, if you're not experienced bike rider or medium bike rider, you might not feel safe going down a roadway, and you certainly won't feel safe going down a bike lane if it's subject to being blocked. And so what the growing trend is, you know, throughout the country and pretty much the world and in Southern California is to protect these facilities. And the cross-section that I have here is taken from our Stewart Street Protected Bike Way Project that we're working on, that would bring Protected Bike Ways from Colorado to Kansas in both directions. Really just illustrates on the top what the existing condition is. You can see the green bike symbol is on the left side of the parking, and on the bottom you can see that we're reversing it. You're now protected behind something, whether it's a parked vehicle, or a raised curb, or bollards. It puts you in a separate space, and the goal here is to bring a facility that can be used by all ages and abilities, that it's not just the experienced cyclists that feel safe in it, in the hope that we can grow ridership in users because we're creating these facilities that anyone would feel safe using, but not in the mixed traffic. Here's just a picture of one facility that was built in Los Angeles, using fairly low-cost materials, such as flex posts. So this image here is a map of how we're starting to think about building Protected Bike Way Networks. So the green lines on the map are where we have protected facilities, the most, you know, the biggest ones that are on there are the beach pathway. That's a separated protected facility, it's not here any vehicle, and then our exit path. The lines in blue are the ones that are mostly, they're really late in the design stage or early in the design stage, and moving along the top on Stewart Street, and then the 17th Street Bike Way that will bring about a mile of bike way. Meanwhile, the red segments that are shown here are other segments in the network, I mentioned earlier, that we're looking at opportunities to put in Protected Bike Way segments, either through our on-call contracting, or as part of some of the annual resurfacing. These are in the earlier evaluation phases currently. One thing that I'll note is that building a Protected Bike Way Network isn't as easy as just drawing the lines and connecting them. I think that we are seeing that there are a lot of challenges because we have limited right-of-way, so it comes down to where's parking? What about turning lanes that are out there? Are there buses that operate on those facilities because they require boarding of bus stops and they require larger lane lengths? Also thinking about, how does this become a connected network so that it does all link up, and we can connect it? And how does it provide access to parks and schools and to the downtown core? And I know that one of the things that we're, that we've been thinking about is we're starting to look at where these facilities go, is by looking at some of the shared mobility device data of where those riderships are, we're seeing this extensive amount of use in the downtown core, and that's where a lot of the ridership is occurring. So I think the core is going to be a focus. One of the projects that is sort of in that downtown area that would provide additional connectivity is the Ocean Avenue Protected Bike Way, that would actually link some of those green segments that are on there. But then really moving ahead, so I think moving ahead, we'll be interested in hearing people's thoughts on where we should prioritize these, knowing that there will be some challenges as we move ahead with them. And that's all we have tonight.
Thank you. So, questions of staff, I'm sure there are many. Should we go down the line, or?
Okay.
Commissioner Funda Brani, do you have questions?
I don't know who is best to answer this, but it seems that our safety data has kind of flatlined, there's a lot of noise in it, but it's the same number of deaths every year, about four, thereabouts. Is that accurate? Can I hear your take on it?
Yeah, I mean, I think that it's not, it's not changing, the rolling average is not changing that quickly, however, we are seeing the trend going in the right direction, just not very fast.
Well, we saw crashes going down, but we didn't see fatalities.
Severe and fatal, yeah, severe and fatal is not going down, that is true.
But what we really should be measuring is not absolute numbers, how many deaths a year, but deaths per choosing metric mile traveled, deaths per, you know, certain amount of circulation in the thousands, a hundred thousand, and likewise, bike ridership the same thing. You know, you could have bike ridership flat, but your bike ridership's going up, so you're actually doing better than you would otherwise. Where are we on that, in that kind of comparison? The ratio of utilization versus the safety.
Yeah, and I think that there are different schools of thought. I mean, I think some people, well, and I guess I'm, it probably isn't inconsistent with what you're saying, that, you know, generally speaking, some people feel like, you know, the only acceptable number is zero, right?
I agree with that.
But you aren't saying that's, you aren't disagreeing with that. And to be able to measure progress along a normalized sense of collisions makes sense. We have in the past sometimes done that by the total traffic counts. We actually are right now, we could do that again, those hadn't changed a lot, so we didn't bother. You know, we had seen that those were fairly similar, so it wouldn't have made it that...
Traffic counts from 2017 to 2019.
Yeah, exactly.
Really?
So those hadn't...
Kind of surprising.
Yeah, they hadn't, they hadn't changed substantially, so that would have not changed the number substantially, but we are, to your, to the broader point of where we are with, excuse me, more regular counts, we are investigating right now the potential of upgrading some of our traffic signals so that we can actually get real, not real-time, but sort of very regular vehicle and bicycle counts at a number of intersections. Now, it's somewhat cost prohibitive, so we're looking at some range of between 18 and 50 intersections, depending on what we can afford, but sort of taking existing signal technology and using it to provide, you know, day-by-day counts. Right now, we've been a bit hamstrung by the fact that all we had was every other year, which is tough, it doesn't give you much to work with. So one of the things, that's just a behind-the-scenes thing that we're doing, is trying to establish this network citywide, where we'll be able to then have much more nuanced understanding of trending, as well as to take that data to potentially normalize different things.
So in terms of our greenhouse gas reduction, are we using less gasoline as more cars are electric? Do we see that actually is happening? Or is the car utility utilization going up, something flatlining on greenhouse gases?
That's not a data point that we are collecting. I mean, perhaps someone from Office of Sustainability and Environment is doing that kind of calculation. We have not been doing that kind of calculation. I mean, you know, we're tracking what they're doing with regard to the number of vehicles registered in Santa Monica that are EV, but not beyond in terms of, we have not been sort of accessing and regularly diving into anything more nuanced than that.
Commissioner, I believe we have OSC coming to us in March for an update, so if that's a question that you're asking.
Well, it fits in the whole LOS Vietnam Travel Analysis, if you will. Last general question is, we have a million different types of pedestrian crosswalks in our streets, different ways of strapping, and it seems that they're different colors, they're different bandits, it's a circus. Is that intended, or are we heading toward a standard design? That's the first question, it's the second question.
Yeah, so what you see is a variety out there, sometimes is reflective of changing best practices.
That's where I'm going.
So sometime, you know, basically, our folks are doing the best practice that they believe at the time, and sometimes, you know, that might be something that was four years ago, or whatever. There is a concerted effort to bring everything up into the international crossing, which is the higher-visibility white closely closed bars. And as one of the things, for example, that Joe's doing on Wilshire is looking at standardizing the way that we are putting in advanced stop bars, as well as warning, striping, and things like that. So we are, there is complete awareness of the issue that you're talking about, and a desire that as we go through and do a lot of the repaving work in the city, that we are always replacing it with the current best practice, and that that over time becomes more consistent.
Is the best practice that some sections of the process have been proven to be safer for pedestrians, or have been cheaper to maintain? They last longer because the tires go between the stripes instead of through the structure.
No, I mean, I think, I think Santa Monica actually is doing a great job with regard to sort of prioritizing pedestrian safety. We don't do any compromise with regard to spacing them further apart so that they don't get driven on like other cities do. We are, we are picking, a lot of people look to us for like the quality of our standard design and really like what we're doing, and I've never, I've never been in a room where folks have said, oh, well, that's gonna, you know, that pedestrian crosswalk style is going to be too expensive, we can't do that one. It's always, you know, what's the best practice and what makes for the best safety? So I think if you see differentiation, it's really a reflection of just a changing knowledge base about what to do, which does change in the industry, right? Professionals do additional research, and conditions are a little bit different corner by corner, so, you know, there is some differentiation depending on how the intersection functions as well, but...
Thank you.
Hi.
With lots of information. I'm going to ask you about the thing I asked you about over twenty minutes, which is micro transit, the return of the de facto trolley in Santa Monica. One of the things I was noting, I was kind of sad to see that the change, you know, in bicycles over the nine years that you've been tracking, it was 1.44%. To me, that, for the amount of time, effort, money, staff we have thrown on that, that's usually really small. And then the TMOs, on the other hand, in two years of tracking, they've had a 3% change in drive-alongs, which is huge. And what are they doing that's a little different than what we're doing with this focus on the bicycles, is they have these microbuses, and they go around, and what do we, who do we talk to? You know, the big blue bus doesn't want to do it. So how do we get that started? How do we get that looked at, studied, to see if there, if that would really influence the way people move around the city? Another thing I noted in the report that's coming next about vehicles, vehicle miles traveled, is this whole idea that it's not just getting to work, but there's this concept of the tour, where when they're at work in the workday, they'll bring their car because they need to run other errands, go to meetings, and so the real vehicle miles traveled is not only how they get to work, but is influenced by the kind of transportation availability there is once they get there. And we're not offering it. How, you know, so how can we make that leap? What do we have to do?
So to talk about the first question about, you know, what are the employers doing differently? I think one thing that is important to just note is that, you know, the relationship between an employee and employer, and the conditions of that employment site are a much more comprehensive package of things, that, it's a much more comprehensive package of influences and a more controlled relationship, whereas, you know, we have millions of people moving around the city for millions of different things that we may or may not have any communication with. Whereas an employer and employee, you know, there's charging for parking at the work site, there's an incentive the employer can offer, there's socialization and competition the employer can offer. So there's, there's a lot of different ways to push and pull, to carrot and stick. That infrastructure is just, it's just the carrot, right? And, well, I shouldn't say that, I mean, your first item tonight was a bit the stick, right? So I think that, I think we have to look, that it's not just that they offer microtransit, it's that they also have the ability to say, if you'd like to come here in your car, you have the welcome, you're welcome to do so, it's going to cost you $200 a month. You know, and that's just not something that we envisage. Maybe it's not appropriate for us, you know, for various reasons, it's not what we're doing. So I think that's part of it. I think, I too love the idea that there would be some sort of small local shuttle that would get around town. We're fortunate as a city because of our tourism base to have the free ride, which I guess is called Circuit now, which enables people west of Lincoln, at least, to hail an electric vehicle, you know, during, I think, 11 a.m. to 9 p.m. most days. It doesn't serve the whole city and that kind of thing, so it's suboptimal in that way. It's extremely expensive to run those services. It's not uncommon for an individual trip to be, to cost four to five to nine dollars, depending on the efficiency of the operator and the labor costs and everything. So I think this, the financial reality is that the city offering that kind of service is very expensive, and I don't know that anyone has figured out the secret package that would be able to make it possible.
We do so many expensive things. I mean, if we really knew what we needed and where it would be, wouldn't there be funding out there? Couldn't we get all these big employers with these deep pockets who are providing these shuttles for their employees to give the city money so that those instead could be public? I mean, there has to be ways, I just feel like it's not being looked at. It's like, oh, yeah, that's too big, that's too expensive, let's not do that now. But, I mean, we're spending a lot of money on these bike lanes and things, and, you know, I just feel that I'm questioning if we're really doing what we really need to do to get people out of cars.
I think that the ongoing operations cost on transit are, is phenomenal. It's hard to even wrap your head around how much it costs to run something that's available at the time that people expect and people's expectation, thanks to many other sort of retail things, is that it should be there when I want it, at any time I want it. And I think that that is creating a certain cost profile that is really hard. And I don't think that we've not, look, I mean, I know that in conversations with Big Blue Bus and others, we all are interested in the idea and have yet to find a willing grantor, or a package of service that seems to make some sense, and to actually be something affordable for the variety of types of times and places that people want to travel. So, I mean, I think the thing that might be the way to try and make that happen would be to really ask the question of what, what big blue bus services are facilitating the trips within the city? How is, how might Big Blue Bus be better done, marketed, experienced, however, to make that intercity trip something that if people want to make on Big Blue Bus?
Yeah, well, when they've come to us, and I have asked the question, and they're, oh, that's not the business we're in, sorry, we can't do that. I just feel like we're saying, get on a bike or stay home, instead of get on a bike or use a different thing. And I feel like we're not really offering people alternatives. I, you know, we're not ready to say, don't drive your car downtown, because we're not, we're making, we're not offering like real everyday workable options for people who have cars, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I think the other, the other piece of that puzzle is, you know, we're a very walkable city, we're a city where walking is part of our culture, and it's something we often take for granted that, you know...
Not if it's more than 35 minutes. Anyway, but thank you, I'm sorry, chatting.
Okay. First, thank you, everybody. I, I'm glad we're here. I want to observe that this is a lot all at once, and I would just love that, love to figure out a way for us to have maybe more frequent conversations in smaller, you know, smaller bites, because it all gets loaded up, and then we want to try to solve everything all at once. And that's of course not how you're working, because you're pacing it all out. So I'll ask a few questions, and then off, when we get to discussion, offer some ideas. But in your tracking, we know that one measure for bikes, bike utilization is the presence of women, moms, kids on the bike ways. Are you tracking age and gender in usage? Do you have a way of... Do you have a way of, is that what the resident survey helps you with or?
Yeah, that would be one way we could do it. Um, but we have not, we did, the only time that we've really invested, invested in some of that was we did a, a before and after study with, um, what we call the Bike Tech Demo Project where we painted a couple of different types of bike boxes to see how they, and so we actually had the consultant pay someone to stand there and do their best guess of, you know, age, gender and so on. Uh, but that's one project in eight years. Um, but we could, yeah, the resident travel survey probably would be the best way to, to get at that, um, because the shared mobility data doesn't do anything. Well, I mean, I guess you could survey, you could survey users of shared mobility as well and sort of see, um, how much, um, that's penetrating, uh, sort of different types of classes of users.
Does that be, that be, that be helpful?
But you're right, resident travel survey is best.
Also on equity issues, I mean, across different communities. Um, on the TMOs, I'm bouncing around, I apologize. On the TMO, um, five, goes from one shuttle to five shuttles suddenly lined up on Colorado or Broadway. Are any of these companies sharing shuttles because they've worked out that they can co-invest and save some money and get more people?
Uh, they're hoping that they'll get to that point. So quite firmly, all of their shuttles are at capacity, so they don't have room to add anyone. Um, there is this interesting thing in the tech world where like not everybody wants their employees to be sitting next to employees of another company. Uh, so that has been a barrier.
The NDA row. We can just have the NDA rows.
Uh, so that's a, a new barrier for us that we're facing, that you don't want people right next to each other for an hour and a half sharing trade secrets. Uh, but that's one of the things that we hope the TMO can bring to the table is help create that sharing of seats amongst employers.
Okay, thank you. Um, one of the things that changed since last you were here is that the walk, uh, it is now legal to walk on a flashing, don't walk. We've talked about this before. Your data seems to suggest that it is not contributing to car versus ped, but, um, is that a fair statement?
I mean, I don't, I don't have anything, I don't know. I don't have any, I haven't done analysis nor web data to really dive into say one way or the other.
Okay. And I see you're doing Pico and SMC and anecdotally I've seen it mostly around SMC, so where there's just been uncertainty and waiting for something to, yeah, because you get people rushing into the intersection, you have cars backed up to make right turns and people rushing into the intersection at certain times of day, but that's anecdotal, so I wouldn't want to make, do anything, but since you're getting, you're going down that road.
This is adjacent to campus?
Yeah, yeah. Um, haven't, we didn't hear anything about speed limits. What's our thinking on, um, speed limits, lowering speed limits citywide, 30 miles an hour maybe?
That's a tough practice to unravel. Um, we're working on it. Um, a speed survey is being initiated just, it's time, right? We have, uh, we've hit our clock and when we need to redo the, the check for the 85th percentile. Um, we have not started a deeper policy discussion about how we do set and to what extent we can push. I mean, I think our, generally speaking, our practitioners, uh, fairly strongly believe that state law constrains us in terms of to what extent we can round and what factors we consider, but we're continuing to kind of poke around the edges of that to see, you know, what type of supplementary studies or other things could be done to, to push it to, for another five. Um, respecting at the same time that, that, you know, the traffic engineers do have the right to make that decision and, uh, and that the police officers have to also feel comfortable that it's enforceable, wouldn't get thrown out in court, right? So these are the, the factors that are all going into how we do that.
And the City of LA didn't talk to you when they made the speed limit on Pico east of Santa Monica, 40, and now we're 35 and we get.
Did not get that.
Okay. Um, two other things quickly, uh, growth anecd, again, this is anecdotal, but, um, when I was at the commotion conference, um, and there was a show of hands, you know, what technology would you invest in if you had a hundred dollars? Is it scooters? Is it traditional? Is it, uh, use traditional transportation companies? Is it TNC, the network companies like Uber and Lyft? Or is it e-bikes? And a really strong plurality of people said they e-bikes more than anything else. Um, and I think this, this follows on Commissioner Prescott's question in terms of how we move people. Is there a strategy to leverage, um, that growth, to encourage that growth? Residents, I hear more and more about people who are switching to e-bikes for their commute. Council members doing this.
Yeah.
Local leaders.
We're fantastic, we're fortunate to have all of the bike shops we do on Main Street. I mean, I, I struggle to think of anywhere else in L.A. that has the concentration of bike shops to do and the great resource we have at the Bike Center. So we, you know, as we, we refer people over to the Bike Center, which has a really, I think, depth of knowledge around e-bikes for individuals as well as e-bikes for families. Um, and they now have the ability to actually set people up and help them purchase and do other things. So, um, I think we're leveraging that relationship and that partnership as best we can. Um, one thing we didn't talk about that we're doing with some residual grant funded money, um, for Safe Streets for Schools is actually trying to set up, um, a five bike lending library for parents, um, through the Safe Streets for School program is to make some electric bikes that are outfit for family use, available for a, you know, a couple weeks to a month for a person to try it out, to check it out and to try it out on a regular basis, outfit, outfit them with helmets, locks and the things that they need to be successful so as to try and get them acclimated to that kind of behavior change. So we're, that's a first foray for us, um, into that, but that's one way in which we're trying to help that adoption start to take some root. Um, I'm eyeing New York DOT and some work they're doing right now on e-bike delivery that I s, I.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I heard it here at first. Um, but I'm sort of thinking, we just feel like the right place for that. Um, I haven't quite figured out how we might make that work and what the partnership might be and those types of things, but I sort of have a sense that that might be another way to push that along in terms of visibility.
So two last things, um, one is aside, but this, this leads to the next one, which is, again, obviously bike theft is an ongoing problem. The Bike Center, the Bike Center Bike Ballet for downtown Santa Monica, I'd be curious to know what their metrics of success look like. It's certainly something our family has used, biking downtown, uh, almost times when I said we biked rather than bus to grove. Uh, that's a huge resource, but it's only there. And I worry in terms of long-term uptake on e-bikes and regular bikes, that a, a limiting factor on that uptake is that people simply don't feel comfortable investing in a bike. They're risking it at home or, you know, other commissioners have had other experiences, you know, in their residences, but, um, but, uh, just biking somewhere and leaving your bike out. So how can we provide safe and secure bike parking in the city to encourage people to get out and use the permanent rest for it? And then make the investment because they know they can use it.
Right. Yeah, no, that is, I mean, and that's a place where you all might be very well situated with regard to both setting the, the rules for how parking, bike parking is laid out and access on properties and also holding individual property owners, um, to, to, to delivering that. Um, because I think some, some additional secure areas, even rooms with lockers inside them or additional bike lockers. I mean, the locker is the best place for an individual's bike. It doesn't work for cargo bikes or unusually shaped bikes, in which case you're stuck with the bike room. The bike room is, is a nice additional layer, right? You're not on the street, but then you run into problems where is it, you know, is it inaccessible? Is it, people know where it is? How do they get into the room? So there's some operational things. Um, so I, yeah, I think that, that's something that has to be seriously looked at. Um, the locker might be the sort of near-term solution and, you know, increase on those.
And then last question, because why not? Um, but tech is coming for delivery robots on sidewalks. Um, are we, knowing how scooters arrived in Santa Monica and it kind of took us a little bit by surprise, we can see this coming from a mile away, maybe not the robot itself, um, which is the problem. Is there a conversation, I mean, is there some conversation happening about A, that mode which we're seeing and B, autonomous, uh, autonomous traffic maybe impacting some of our bikeways and our side, and our sidewalks? Uh, and could this be perhaps incorporated into your Safe Streets for Seniors conversation or other places where we could just look a little bit down the road to see how we might be prepared? I'm a little worried, to be honest.
Yeah, you're not alone. Um, you know, when we were here two years ago, we gave a pretty extensive kind of look ahead of, kind of look at things that we thought we needed to be striking forward on. And, and to some degree, we'd be able to wrap a few of those things into the scooters, right? So the, the foray into sort of how are we setting ourselves up to communicate digitally with, with service providers is starting to get laid down through, through that. So there's some bits and pieces we're able to put together. Um, we don't have a guiding policy and we don't have a strategy at the moment. Uh, and the reality is, is, you know, we have a lot of things we want to achieve and, you know, we're doing our best to make progress on the ones that are on our current plate. But yeah, that worries me too. You know, I don't have much more to answer than that, which is that we are aware and we, we're trying to wrap it in where we can, um, but then that's what, that's our approach.
But I, I, I'm asking because I think that some of the conversation you raised about, say scooter placement, scooter use of sidewalks, geo, as geo fencing gets more advanced, the ability to limit what's happening on a sidewalk. If you, if that work is happening, then potentially when this technology arrives, you have the, you have the operational and the policy tool to say, oh, this is that.
Right.
We're going to, you know.
Yeah, so, yeah, we're, right now where we're trying to invest there is on, on the back, you know, it's a back technology side of things, but yeah.
Commissioner McHannon, what range of questions? Do you think we're winning on the congestion front?
I don't think anyone's winning on the congestion front.
Right.
No. Right. Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, but the report has a range of measures and suggests all sorts of good things, but overall we still haven't quite cracked that. No extra trips. What would be the metric that you want inserted into the city that would enable mobility to be measured in a way which would drive change?
I don't need more measurements. I need different things to change. I don't need to measure different things. I just, you know, we.
No, but I think when you started off, you said that the city measures bread and butter things which become priorities. What's the thing that you would ask the city to measure which would drive greater focus on mobility? Because visits to the desk, time at the desk, that gets measured, that, that gets actioned.
It's not that we don't measure the right things, it's that the measurement doesn't always influence the decision-making in as much as, well, there are lots of different measurements and lots of different things the city is trying to do simultaneously and sometimes other things have to come first. Um, and that's just part of.
Why?
Well, because homelessness is really important and because, you know, the environmental, other environmental elements are very important. So I mean, in fairness, you know, I think that, that, um, we measure the, we measure pretty well and the question is how are we setting up systems and practices to incentivize the behavior that we want, which includes the carrots and the sticks.
So citywide, it would seem that a move out of cars would help us with our environmental goals strongly, but we haven't been able to prioritize that to the extent that we would want despite the stated emphasis on the environment. And I'm just speaking as someone who thinks no matter what we've done, this summer in Australia has changed for all time, the way the world has to think about climate change. And if we aren't going to action it now, we never will, and that will be to our detriment. So they all heard me speak on this last word. So how do we make that link more strong, more prominent and more quickly delivered? Because when we look at the action, the bike action plan, uh, some of the five-year things are at year nine or 10. So we should have done more.
People do what's easy.
Yeah, I know that, but I'm, I'm actually asking the harder question, which is how do we make it part of the environmental drive?
You set up the system in the city to make it as the easiest thing to do and the most convenient thing to do, the most environmental thing to do. You make it harder to do everything else.
Okay, so what would you want us to do to make that happen? That's why we're here and that's why you're presenting to us tonight. What would you want us to do?
None of us have a magic wand. I mean, this is, this, this is the challenge, right? Is to make this progress is progress on 12 different fronts simultaneously with two hands, you know? I mean, we, we do, I mean, I don't know that we incentivize the behaviors that we want people to do. We still make it harder to roll up on your bike. We make it more insecure to park your nice bike. We make it cheaper to park. We think you can store your personal thing on the street and that's more important than having a bike lane there.
So, so I understand that.
And we're not alone. We do a great job as a city, but this is just part of the sentiment of the populace of the world that, that they want that convenience.
No, no, I totally understand that. I think the whole world is being in that process and that includes 25 million people in Australia and the government and so on, but they're not in that mode anymore. And sooner or later, I mean, I don't know how long it'll be, it'll come to California too. So you've made an expert presentation this evening. I've got other questions on the its and bits of it, but going past that, sitting here for us going forward, the things that we have to ask for and we have to do, what are your thoughts on, uh, we should tackle it?
Every time you're faced with a question, think about how do I make it the easiest thing to do? How do I take away the barrier? How do I?
Does that include motions to the city council, uh, requests of staff, et cetera, et cetera? Is that what, the way you see it? I'm not putting you on the spot, but I'm.
Oh, uh, yeah, yeah.
Is that going to direct the process?
I was thinking about more like what, what's the tangible deliverable that you could do? And I'm, and that was my answer, more sort of driving, driving the design of buildings and places and projects.
So that's one thing, but then there's this overall thing.
And there's that.
So I have some other questions. Um, right person for Vision Zero because you've been standing there for a minute. So, so Oslo has just had no deaths. What would we have to do to get to that point? Is that you, Jason?
What do the Norwegians say?
Yeah. I, I didn't know you were Norwegian, but you know, that falls under you, right?
Yeah.
Is that lower speeds or is it a different way of, of, you know, looking at the issue?
As Francis said, you know, this is another issue where we have to come out of both hands and multiple pots on the stove. I, I do think that if you wanted to kind of identify a silver bullet, speed is probably the easiest way to achieve it. When someone is hit at 30 miles per hour, they have a 50% chance of survival. At 20 miles per hour, there's a 90% chance of survival. So, um, now of course we have to operate under the state framework of setting speeds at the 85th percentile and, you know, so in order to reduce speeds, you have to change your roadway design so that people aren't driving slower so that then you can set a slower speed. And in order to do that, it takes a lot of money to, and time to, to reimagine those corridors.
Are we going to redo this year what we did last year with the pink signs in the campaign or take the easy road or the safe road and link it with the, um, walk it, bike it, day program for a sort of whole of city approach to safety?
Yeah, we're going to continue that. I don't think we're going to do an additional run of lawn signs, um, at this point in time. That was a grant funded effort. Um, we are going to continue doing the messaging. We're looking at doing additional stencil markings at additional crosswalks around town.
That's the, the looking live one?
Yeah, uh, just little wake-up reminders as people are crossing the street. Um, the campaign to address the trend of drunk screwing that we're noticing and I would use the data.
Drunk screwing. Well, we had it last week with the brewery, you know, we're talking about screwing. Um, okay. Could I ask Colin, so Colin, you go to the school board and you talk to them about various issues. Have you talked to them about, um, TDM for schools? And the school staff, I mean, they're the one big employer in the city that doesn't seem to be.
So the school district is not subject to the city's TDM ordinance. Um, they had been leasing parking from the city at the civic center. And so through that leasing process, there was some, uh, opportunity that was presented to the school district that they could implement a TDM plan. And if they implemented a TDM plan, they would be offered parking spaces at a lower rate. Uh, so the school district, uh, did look into implementing a D, a TDM plan. They did not do it in a manner in which they were able to lock into that lower rate. So it's not something that they have, um, continued to do.
So, so they're outside the program and they're one of the biggest employers in the city. Um, it does seem to me that TDM's kind of reached the limits of its applicability, that it's not as strongly influential of change or, um, as it could be. it's not as strongly influential of change or as it could be. What other things could we do?
I think that's something that we might talk about on the next item tonight.
I need to get prepared as a system.
So now that we've been living with our TDM ordinance for the last five years, we're certainly seeing where it was effective and who it's reaching and who it is not. I like to say that we have a TDM program that expects a lot of an individual. The majority of our TDM ordinance centers around something called a transportation allowance. So if an employee does not bring a car to work or if a resident does not own a car, they're eligible for a transportation allowance. But that sets a very high barrier to entry. You have to already not have an automobile. But in the reality that we live in today, most people already have the automobile and we're trying to get them to use it less frequently and then potentially eventually get rid of that vehicle. So I say that we need a little bit more average Joe TDM, not referring to my colleague, Joseph. So.
Clearly.
Please not. So for folks, families, individuals who already have a car, still find a way so where they are provided TDM benefits, carrots and sticks to those people and to not just at this high bar. You know, that was set to where it's almost cost neutral for the developer. You're either paying for this parking space or you're paying for a transportation allowance, but you're not having the cost of doing both. But I think that we're finding that given the reality of human behavior change, we have to find a way to offer TDM to folks that do currently have an automobile.
Thank you. I have last two questions to you, Jane. Thank you. So I've seen that you've done some things on wheel share. How effective have they been? And allied to that was, is there anything that when you came to the planning commission that we offered you that you actually accepted? Because I read the sheet. It didn't look to me as if there was anything that we said that made a difference.
You read the white, I'm sorry?
You said it's a sheet with some information.
Yep.
And I wasn't sure that we'd added to anything.
Well, I think, so your first question was what have we implemented?
No, how's it going? There are some things that I've seen you've done and that seem to have worked pretty well.
Yeah, we haven't done anything in the field that much. I mean, there are a few tactical things that we have completed in the field. So for example, return only restrictions at Harvard were implemented in October. Those appear to be working well. We haven't received any complaints and maybe we've heard positive comments about how that's working in the city of year one. There are some single timing modifications that we've made, particularly at Fourth Street left turn. We've added left turn time to help the buses make that left turn on Fourth Street from westbound Wilshire. And there are some other adjustments that we've made along the corridor, such as adding additional LPIs to help people cross. So we did try to deploy some treatments quickly throughout the study as we identified some of the issues that were out there. I mean, I think that the planning commission meeting that we had was helpful to talk about some of the larger alternatives that we had, get some initial feedback about particularly during our, in our hotspot, if you remember, priority locations that we saw to really get that knee jerk reaction, are we headed in the right path? We wanted to be able to vet that as much as we could. And I think we also identified where we had some options about where people felt about different priorities that we're thinking about, where we had a couple of different alternatives. For example, one of them was whether we implement the right terminally restriction more broadly beyond Harvard. And we had, for example, suggested whether we do a phased approach or a more intensive approach along the corridor. And where we resulted after that meeting is that we're looking at implementing that right terminally restriction at all the unsignaled locations. So I think that that meeting was very helpful to help vet some of those recommendations and make sure that we're heading in the right path.
So going to the overall bike network or the protected bike lanes. Read the report, listened to you, and accept that it's a difficult thing to insert protected bike lanes into a city like ours. But some years ago, when we started the bike lane, going back, I guess, 2010, there was some discussion at that stage about painting bike lanes. And the two best bike lanes that we had, I think, were the ones when McGreen went in outside City Hall along Main Street. It galvanized everyone because it became very obvious. So it was an extraordinary demonstration of the power of what bikes could achieve. Now, I've got some difficulties with some of the places that have been picked and I understand why they have, but even if you go ahead with those, can there be at least one, if not two, completed, long, protected bike lanes, however quick strike they are? It could be Main Street, it could be Broadway. Something that would show to people you can get from here to there, east to south, east to north, east to west, whatever, across the city by using this, even if in absolute terms, it doesn't contribute to extra safety on the street or whatever else, but it shows people this is the power of a protected bike lane. Because everywhere you put it in, it's been magical already. I mean, up at 14th Street under Colorado is just fantastic. And there are other places around town. Can we think about that in addition to the things that you're doing already?
No, absolutely. Yeah, and I think that's what we want to come out of this protective bike lanes study is really start to prioritize where we put those links in. And I think, like I was saying, I think some of the areas where we're seeing some of those priorities are particularly in the downtown and then how that links in with other segments. So we want to start connecting these segments so that you have a network, so that there's more of a spine through the city that both brings you root areas of the downtown, connects you to areas across the city.
So Second Street is a possibility?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't rule it out. I think that.
Because I mean, I love the idea of Ocean Avenue, but that's, that's not for residents, really.
Sure. I think, I think the challenge with, with a lot of these locations will be parking.
As we heard this evening, we're only 60% capacity on all those parking spots in the city. So that ought to be a very easy thing. And we've had a secret analysis in the downtown because we did the DCP. So that should remove a lot of the problems, right?
Hopefully so.
I think the answer is yes, it does. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reese?
Just a couple of quick, maybe quick. I always think that, you know, one of the most important transit infrastructure pieces are dedicated bus lanes. And the dedicated bus lanes have the most flexibility. We can move them virtually anywhere. What is the city, is the city doing anything right now to, to implement those?
Yeah, Big Blue Bus just came forward with an identification of their priority corridors that include Fourth Street between Wilshire and Pico. Ocean Park Boulevard was something they wanted to look at for queue jumps and then Pico eastbound. So those areas in which their buses are losing the most time, their higher capacity buses are losing the most time. So they got a positive read from council with regard to pursuing that. They have applied for a grant to study Fourth Street in more detail, what would it take to actually implement Fourth Street bus lanes? And, you know, from all appearances are sort of climbing forward with, sort of seeing what they can do. And it includes the full range, right? It's a full striped, dedicated 24/7 to a full dedicated peak only to queue jumps, to relocating bus stops, so that they're just saving five seconds over the course of a stop, but 10 times in a row, that adds up. So they are actually very actively, we're very supportive of them and working with them on whatever they need to try and see what they can implement.
Well, that's exciting because my last go around on the commission, they were pretty anti. Everything I'd heard was pretty anti, we're not interested in doing this. So I'd have to see that. But let me ask a couple of questions. What do you mean by a queue, a queue jump? Is that what you said?
Yeah, it's just basically something at the intersection that's not really infrastructure based, more operations based. They give buses a chance. Imagine it's sort of like an LPI for buses, right? That they kind of get out and get going ahead.
Okay. And the LPIs are fantastic. The more, the more we can do that in the city, the more we should. Tell me a little bit more about Pico. So you're telling me from east of, from the ocean to the east part of the city, we're looking at doing it?
Oh, for bus lanes or for?
Bus lanes.
Oh, bus lanes. They're specifically looking at, I want to say it was 18th and East, with a particular focus on 28th and East. But don't quote me exactly on those numbers, but basically, you know, the areas in which eastbound get the most congested in the PMP. That's, that was their focus area. But I think they're interested in the entirety of the corridor or whatever they can get because they also experience some blockage west of Lincoln because they have a fair number of buses going from Pico then to the southbound Lincoln.
Well, it gets back to that comment you had made earlier, which is we need to make it as convenient as possible. And we give them those dedicated lanes where they're out of traffic. It makes it more tolerable than sitting on a bus in the same amount of traffic. So then a couple of TMO related questions is where are we or what's the latest with the hospitals?
So a few things with the hospitals. As a part of the St. John's Development Agreement, they put additional funding in towards the TMO activities in the St. John's area. So this past year, the TMO did outreach specifically in the healthcare district with both St. John's, UCLA. And then they also did some personalized travel planning where they went door to door and talked to the residents that were in that area. So it's great that we not just focused on the employers and their employee trips, but also going door to door and talking to residents so they knew what their mobility options were. One of the things that came out of the Go Samo Achievement Award, so we do not regulate UCLA. They report directly to the air quality management district. They do not have to submit a TDM plan to us. But they very badly wanted the Go Samo Achievement Award. So they submitted all of their trip production plans to us for the past three years so we could review their plan. And so we now have a conversation with them. And interestingly, for the air quality management district, they're just worried about AM trips, whereas we in the city are concerned about AM and peak period trips. So UCLA wants to continue to be involved so much that they're willing to now survey the employees for both the AM window and the PM window because they really want to be involved with our program. So I think you probably saw in the annual report, there are quotes from UCLA. So it's super interesting that here's this employer that you don't even regulate that values the TMO so much and how we've been able to help their employees. And then with St. John's, they're coming through with their face to master plan and we're having ongoing conversations with them about their TDM plan.
Right. I would continue to urge you to, I would urge you to continue that conversation. What about, there was always some controversy, oh, I may say, what's happening with average ridership with city staff?
Behavior with city staff is sitting at about 1.61. We recently implemented parking cash out with city employees and that has had, that has helped move the needle some. And we are continuing to, I think Francie, Francie mentioned the staffing process that we have once a month. We go and we look at our own employee travel behavior and how that is changing. We actually now survey city employees every quarter. So that survey that we used to do annually to look at how we're getting to work, we now do that on a quarterly basis and we're deploying tactics more frequently to see how they are changing our own travel behavior.
And what's that showing?
It has shown some interesting things like new employee orientation. We now go to new employee orientation and give information to those employees and we are seeing that they are actually green commuting at a higher rate than our employees that have been working here a long time, which was somewhat interesting because I was thinking that perhaps new employees are having to live further and further away, which could make it more challenging for them to green commute. But in fact, we saw that they have a slightly higher rate of participation than our existing employees.
Is there, is there an age, is there a correlation between ages?
There's likely something that ties into age and income. However, we're somewhat restricted in what data we have access to.
Yeah, that just, it just seems to me that younger, younger folks are less interested in getting in their cars. I mean, I think we see a lot of data and it's less, fewer and fewer teens are getting their drivers up to 16, so that wouldn't surprise me. That was all the TMO stuff. Then the last is just a comment to piggyback on Commissioner McKinnon. You know, it's great to see the green bike lanes and I, and I think it's, we do have some key ones going north and, north and south closer to the ocean, but to find one that's kind of on the east side of the city from maybe 17th to the east that can go from one side of the city to the other, I think is really critical because you're drawing, I mean, the diagram we saw up there showed some nice greenways, but there's really nothing kind of cutting from north to south in the middle of the city. Not a question, actually. Thank you.
Okay. I have a few questions. At first, thank you very much for this presentation. It's really awesome. I'm very impressed. And I'm kind of disconcerted, and I don't know if you have a response to this, about the inadequate response of other public agencies to what we're trying to do. I don't know where the college sits on this. You made it clear where the school district is. UCLA sounds hopeful, but I think the college is pretty active. Is it? Are they, are they planning with you and involved with you?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, that's cool.
Yeah.
The other question is a, is a big picture one, and I'm going to proceed it with a story from this morning. Is Nina's gone? Did she fall out of her chair? I had breakfast with Nina and some group of women meets every month for breakfast and we, and I, we changed our place to Mel's Diner this morning. And by the time I got from my house to Mel's Diner, I bit Carol Naiman's head off. I mean, the congestion was absolutely unbelievable. Well, she was the first one I saw.
Definitely Carol's fault.
So she, she bore the.
All that conservatory stuff.
I made all the wrong turns, ended up going through downtown. It was just a frigging nightmare. So in the answer to your question of congestion, yes, indeed. But that brought up the, the issue, when we looked across the street from the restaurant of all the housing that's being built, the conclusion was at all costs avoid Lincoln Boulevard when those projects are finished because it's going to be, I mean, it's going to be unbelievable. So my question is, the TMO with employers, I understand, what are you doing and what should you be doing with these large housing projects in terms of transportation management? Because we have, we potentially have 9,000 new units facing us over the next 10 years. It terrifies me that there's no correlation between reducing traffic and job location here and these thousands of units. It could be Armageddon if we don't have some kind of outreach of a TMO type program or TDM type program to housing projects. I think that is something that really, really needs to be thought about.
That is right on the nose of one of the concerns we have looking at the future challenges. I mean, I think that's one of the biggest moving questions for us as well. You know, I'd like Colleen to kind of give more nuance, but the residential side of our TDM program is hard to do. It's not like other people have the answer. It's very, you know, we, with employers, we have the ability to ask them to survey annually to see how they're doing and to ask them to do a plan and to increase that plan if they're not getting to where they need to be. We don't have that kind of, there's no way to do that with housing.
These housing projects all have owners and they have onsite managers. So it seems like there would be, well, they have to by law if they're apartments. There must be some way to interface with the management of these, these big apartment projects in the city. I mean, it's going to be horrible.
I don't know that we think that that's actually going to yield enough to be worth the amount of disruption it would be to those people and to the resources needed to make that happen.
Well, I mean, the other issue, the other answer could be zoning code issues like parking, like no parking.
Right.
Or unbundled parking, whatever. But, but I really think the whole transportation management issue needs to be incorporated into our housing element preparation and preparing for these new units that are coming, hopefully online, maybe online, in the next 10 years.
Couldn't agree more.
So are you guys thinking about that or with all the other things you're thinking about?
Yes, I mean, yes, I think what we've been, and part of this, I think Rachel will talk a bit about in the next, next topic, but yeah, we went down the rabbit hole of wow, if housing is going to be where we are doing most of our growth, we really need to try and develop residential TDM. And we, we for the last couple of months have been trying to that, pursue that and coming up pretty empty handed. And, and the reason I say with such confidence that we were really not, we really don't think that it would yield the results is because we've spent the time thinking about it. It's like, how many property owners would we have to be dealing with? How different would be, this be for them? How much coaching would we have to do with every single property owner?
Interestingly, there are only a few developers still working in Santa Monica because the rest don't touch the city. So, so I mean, there really aren't that many big housing owners in Santa Monica. So just.
But the real power of our TDM ordinance is that it encompasses all employers. So once we start talking about only being applicable to those new developments that they come on, your incremental change is so small for the amount of labor it's taking to get those people to do something which is making them so frustrated and, and is not yielding results. So I think we're just really trying to think of.
We all need to work on this together over the term of the housing.
Absolutely.
It could be, I can't even imagine what it's going to be like. My other issue, I know.
Build housing near transit without parking.
What? No parking? That's the way to do it.
Air transit.
Near transit, no parking.
And make it easy to roll up with your bike.
Is that like part of, you know, that is some of, I think, what is going to be discussed in the next item, but it really leads back to the genesis of, you know, what the loose, what the growth strategy for the city was, which was to have, you know, housing.
what the growth strategy for the city was, which was to have, you know, housing or new development near transit. And then, where you have housing, that you provide services that, you know, people can get to easily. So, it's the placement of land uses. This is not a magic solution. You can't teed in, you know, necessarily just teed on your way.
Well, I know that it's, it's collective.
There's usually some thinking about planning for the transportation. But it's collectively about like investments, you know, in the transportation network because that's Francie saying, you have to make it easy, you know, for folks to get around and make it the right choice. And I mean, being a native of, you know, Vancouver and seeing how that has worked out, you know, in a downtown setting with, you know, thousands and thousands of residential units in a downtown setting, but people being able to make it work without a car and without having, being a traffic congestion nightmares because those choices are made about how you go and where you go and where do you place the land uses. And those are decisions that we as a city collectively make, but you know, it's not just like one, you know, it's not just TDM. I think, you know, it's really part of a strategy that we've been thinking about for a while. You know, another example that's closer home is downtown LA. I mean, the historic core has thousands of new housing units with no parking and a lot of young people there living who don't have cars. So, there's, believe it or not, there's, I mean, I'm not going down there during the week, but there's not congestion because there aren't cars. And then, my final point, I know this is absolutely hopeless, is that I, I met a fellow at a, at a few weeks ago, an older gentleman who lives in Ocean Park, and he was walking along, and he's visually impaired. He's walking along Main Street and he tripped over a scooter and hurt himself. And I'm sure that's not an unusual story. And I mean, I, I understand the concept of the scooters, but I can't imagine that we couldn't somehow require docking stations, at least for some of them, on major thoroughfares like Main Street so they aren't out in the middle of the sidewalk. Have you guys pursued that?
Yeah, what we're trying to move towards is, well, one thing is council directed us to get the parking areas off the sidewalk and into the street.
Well, there are parking and people just drop them.
Yeah. And then, as part of that, to install more of them in the street and then to, and then to first incentivize their use with the goal of building towards requiring the use in these dense areas so that there would be a parking, there would be a device parking spot every block and that at, over time in those busy areas, it would be, it would be required that you use them to avoid some sort of other penalty.
You know, Moscow has docking stations just for your.
If Russia can do it, we can do it. Although I have a different government structure. I just want to put that out there. You do the wrong thing and, you know.
Okay, thank you very much. So, oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Fonda Bernardi.
Yep. In a perfect world, would I like to be doing more? I think one of the things that's, that's special about Santa Monica is our deep commitment to making streets that are human-centric and that are, that are places for social gathering and for people to be. And I feel like one of the ways we could leverage that is to be a vocal voice out there with regard to insisting upon policy and safety. I mean, I think the challenge with self-driving cars is that a lot of the really substantive debates are happening in Washington and in Sacramento. And we don't, and we don't have the bandwidth to do that, honestly. And so, we lean into larger cities that have, you know, bigger staff and lobbyists to, to do that. You know, we, we try and throw our support behind things when we can. And then, at a minimum, so that's one thing in a perfect world would be to be out there and be saying, you know, look, we are, we are understood as a leader in this realm and we're pushing forward to say, it's not okay for you to test until you can show that you're not going to hurt someone who's outside of a car, which I strongly believe we should, should be the case. It isn't necessarily the case. Second would be that we should have some sort of local policy about how we do or do not want them here. And, and to be having a comprehensive strategy about how we might both be making those big, big, bold statements and also be working in all of the infrastructural pieces to set it up the right way too, to say, you know, not only do we want to say from a policy standpoint if we do that, but we're going to have some tools in place to require it and to see that come into fruition. It's all very sort of vague, but one of the ways I mentioned that we're trying to, to Sean's question was, you know, what are we doing around that? Was through the scooter technology and what's called the mobility data specifications, we're trying to start to at least establish the city's position with regard to what kind of information private companies and, right now, it's companies, need to be providing for safe operation. There's a lot of sensitivity around privacy there, so our focus has really been, this is us talking to companies. We're not interested in anyone's personal information or tracking anyone. When it gets to a personally owned self-driving car, that's a little different. We're not there yet, but for the time being, sort of, we're trying to work through the scooters and MDS to set. Yeah, 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 sir, please. Yeah. So, working backwards on that last question, yes. We absolutely are getting the data from a scooter, people using the shared bikes and scooters. Absolutely, we're getting that. We are not, you know, right now, we don't collect the kind of data for transit ridership, particularly unmet demand, don't have that. But Big Blue Bus does have a ton of good data about boarding and the lightings. And so, on the routes that do exist, we have good data there as well. The unmet demand is, is much harder, but the point is taken that, you know, I think there is, you know, it's, it is something we need to continue to chip away at and to not say, oh, it's too hard, it's too expensive, but to continually have on the table, what are we going to do? How are we going to help residents do that? And how are we also going to encourage them to say, enjoy the passageway, right? Don't expect to drive there in two, you know, 10 minutes, maybe a 25-minute bus experience is going to be equal in quality, like, you know, some of that kind of stuff as well. So, it's lots of different pieces. Yes, it includes scooters. Some of the data reporting has been refined to separate them out and some doesn't. And it just depends on what system you're dealing with. I think generally speaking, we're, have enough nuance that we're able to draw some conclusions. It's not 100%. There's some people that are still taking reports and they go, I don't know, just circle and circle the bike instead or whatever. So, not 100%, but enough that we can start to glean some information for, like Jason said, that we know that intoxicated scootering is, is becoming a trend issue. So, we get enough to be able to action a little bit.
Commissioner Andrews. Yeah, it's, when we talk about circulation, I was just wondering, last week, and it came up at the end, last week, there was a report I think from McKinsey on the growth of delivery vehicles and the amount of emissions that they're going to produce and the amount of congestion that they're going to produce. We're talking about eight to 10-minute additions to everybody's commute due to the prevalence of the delivery vehicles. We know that there is emerging technology that some parcel delivery companies are using with electric bikes and electric vehicles. This is tied into the question of autonomous partly by this question of whether, whether we are exploring, A, low-speed lanes that can be shared among multi, you know, different types of vehicles, whether they're electric bike, delivery trucks or bikes, you know, bigger than a bike lane, but separated from a car lane. It's one, car bus lane. And then, separately, what do you think might be the policy world where we would, to your continuing point of encouraging behavior, we want moving to electric bike? How would we incentivize the folks who are doing business in Santa Monica to use electric bikes and electric cargo vehicles instead of, I mean, I know it's taken forever for Nissan to get its cargo vehicle, its electric cargo ban to North America, and there are competitors now, but I'm talking about bikes and other smaller ones.
And so, London and, and New York are the ones that have been doing a little bit of work, particularly with regard to kind of, how do you get to a smaller and electric fleet? The biggest challenge that everyone's flagging right now is, is the idea of secondary sorting. So, one thing that the city could do would be to create, to identify some area in which that sorting could occur that is reasonably accessible to freeways and so on and so forth and accessible to, you know, low-speed infrastructure for, for that to happen. So, that's one thing. The other thing would be to sort of maybe just pick a partner who's, who doesn't maybe do all of the deliveries, but enough to, to try it out. So, I think that's another, another approach one could take. To get, to address your point about low-speed lanes, I think right now, we're, we are, you know, the lane widths and types that we use, we need to depend upon certain established standards and documents, whether it's FHWA or whatever, you know, state or federal. There isn't really that being developed. So, what we could best do is just do really nice, big Cadillac. Funny that that, funny that that's what I'm thinking, you know, e-bike, whatever. Really nice wide bike lanes. The challenge is, is that we often just don't have that kind of real estate. So, we, you know, what you've seen us do over time is make them as wide as we can and add buffers, right? We could, we could take some of that buffer away and make the lane wider, things like that. So, I think what we run into with regard to creating low-speed lanes is the lack of standards and the lack of square footage in our existing street infrastructure without trade-offs. Now, hopefully, over time, there's enough people wanting it that the trade-off of losing their personal car parking, storage space is okay, but at the moment, we're still not there.
Thank you. Thank you, staff, very much. The matter is before the commission for discussion. Do you want to go down the line? Commissioner Reese?
I've got a couple of comments. None of this is linear. And so, some years, we win more than other years. And in general, we're making progress. And I think that's a tremendous thing because in public policy, it's almost impossible to make progress year after year, over a decade. And that's a great thing. And where we are today on bikes and infrastructure on the road is not where we were 10 years ago. And we can all lose sight of that fact, but it's how we keep moving forward and keep attacking the issue. And it's making it safe and easy to get out of a car that's important because it's not that way on the bikes all the time and it's not that way for walking and all sorts of issues. But if we can do that, and that requires us to build the network effect. And so, I think the toughest thing is to guarantee to people who live where Commissioner Lambert lives that she can get into the city not using her car, whether it's by taking a bus or by using an e-bike or whatever it is. And so, that's why I'm saying at this point in our development, the demonstration using dedicated bus lanes that'll improve the speed of the buses or a bike lane all the way down Broadway and Main Street, because they're the two obvious ones that exist at the moment where the infrastructure looks as though it could be easily slotted in, that make people go, oh, so this is what it could look like? Yeah, I, I feel that I could use this if I ride an e-bike or whatever. It's really important to change the mindsets of people because that goes to the first question that I asked you. What would prioritize the change in the minds of the policymakers inside City Hall and get the buy-in of every other department, et cetera, et cetera? Clearly, the big public institutions like the city and the school are the tough ones because they have lots of people that thrive and we need to get them into our system and producing more results. But I do think it's important that we build on this network effect. You're doing lots of great things, but it's important to keep so into the population and keep so into the people who would like to try, hey, we're on a journey and you need to join it and the more you join it, the better it'll be. The easier it'll be to get in and out of the city at after-school time, three to four o'clock in the afternoon, when the roads just clog up because every mother's driving their kid around because they're not, they don't feel it's safe for that kid to ride a bike on at the moment. So, those sorts of things mean we're going where we want to. In answer to your point, Commissioner Lambert, about the 9,000 houses, that's why we need to have this discussion of loosened DCP and we need to put the housing and all the density around the train stations so that we create walkable streets. If we create those walkable streets in those communities, then you don't need to use the car. And so, the quicker that happens, the better it'll be because it'll create the critical mass. And that's the theory of urban development all over the world and you can see it. So, I do think we're making advances. We've heard about some of the institutional problems that exist and some of the infrastructure problems and we would certainly like you to tackle them in a way which brings more people along on the bigger issue. And then, we'll see where we get to next year.
Commissioner Andrews?
So, thank you again. I just have a few points in terms of where we go from here that I think could be helpful to explore, ranging from the specific to the general. At the general level, it would be helpful to know in the future where some of what we've talked about, there are policy holes in Sacramento and, and Washington, and it would be helpful for us to know what they are and what your recommendations are because we are leading as a city, but we can advocate. We can make recommendations to the city council to push for particular legislative fixes. I think that would be helpful for us here, moving forward, particularly when we're looking at other kinds of policies. A specific idea that I just learned about today, apparently in Denmark, first graders get what's called a walking certification and older kids get what's called a biking certification. It's part of the school system and children are equipped with this knowledge and skills to be safe, to navigate their city safely and their community safely. That fits into the policy piece because obviously, we can't make the change in what's taught in our schools, but it's something to think about and maybe something that the city could offer down the line. I love what I'm hearing about with the new walking school bus ideas and, and other things, but the more we can raise a new generation to, you know, green commute from the get-go, that would be helpful. I will make no friends by saying this, but I believe we have to lower speed limit citywide. I think we need to prioritize that, figure out the way to get it done. Obviously, there are a few places like Olympic and San Vicente where we're not going to drop it all the way down, but Pico in Ocean Park, Wilshire, Santa Monica, I think 35 is too fast. I think 30 is a more appropriate standard and 25 in a lot of places. And rather than worrying, I mean, yes, we have to follow the law, but let's start with the outcome that we want and then figure out what we have to do to get there. As far as what the city could be doing with a post, in a post-Reese world and be respectful of a variety of needs, one thing I haven't seen on our street are e-trikes, which are growing in popularity and offer a level of stability that makes them far more accessible to a much rider range of people, and I would kind of put that on the list. As far as protected bike lanes go, I would love to add an east-side, north-south bike lane to complement the mid-city, north-south bike lane that's coming from this side of the room. We've approved a number of tier-two housing projects around Yale and with what's happening on Stewart, Stewart up to Colorado, it might be an opportunity from Montana to Colorado to look at something along Yale and then the jog, which you're already protecting in your new plans, down to Stewart. I want to reiterate, I hope my colleagues share our unqualified support 100% for the Stewart Street Protected Bike Lane. I know there has been some noise lately and I would really like to make it absolutely clear that this is a priority and that overdevelopment doesn't cause bike lanes and that bike lanes don't cause overdevelopment. I just cannot say that. And I think, yeah, I'm just not going to go further than that.
Why not?
I'm not going to. Because, because I understand that there are businesses that are worried about the loss of street parking and it's, we have to make the changes that we have to make and they will find out that it's not the end of the world for them, but I recognize that they don't know that today. I just don't really appreciate the approach that's being taken in that instance when this is so clear. this is so clear. I said it to city council when the queue jumping issue came up, we need biking allowed in bus lanes. I'm going to say it over and over again, but I am worried about the queue jumping interfering with bike lanes, so I just want to make sure that that's an issue. Love this idea about secondary sorting areas, and so when we're looking at our land use planning and what certain currently public land might be available and private land, it would be helpful, and please keep us in the loop with whatever Public Works is planning, with what other folks are planning, so that we can look at that because that could be a game changer and allow us to require certain types of delivery vehicles on our streets. If we don't create those sorting areas now, then we can't turn around in three years and demand it because we don't have--
What's a sorting area?
So the idea is what Francie was saying, that they're looking at secondary sorting areas so when package delivery comes into the city, they can bring it in, they can bring a lot in on a larger vehicle and then shift it to the smaller vehicles to move through the city. But we need to have those spaces available near--
How many answers could be used for housing? Sorry.
I agree with that. Maybe we can do both on the same site. And then residential TDM, I was just looking it up. It's, you know, you've done more research on it, but there are, I think, I share your concern about that and hope that you will bring us opportunities to be supportive of new ideas for residential TDM and encouraging people to mode shift as often as possible. I love this notion that you came out with last year of asking people to mode shift one day a week or one trip a week. We've certainly tried that in our family where we can deliberately mode shift, and, you know, we don't always get it right, but the intent is there. And I noticed, there's a, I'll just, last thing is that there's a product out there called My Green Car, I believe, that will allow you to, it'll track your driving and then it'll tell you which electric car makes sense for you. I wonder whether something might be similar for residential TDM with other modes of transportation, with sort of individualized transit plans to help people figure out what might work for them. It's something that I saw when I was looking at the term, and Santa Monicas like to have things made customized and individualized, and why not try that?
Thank you.
Commissioner Fitzgerald?
I just really feel like, I mean, I think you guys are doing an amazing job stirring 12 pots with two hands, but I think this is a really important thing that's missing, and we just can't afford to have it be too hard or too expensive or too out of reach. I think it's just, I think it's the key to getting all the, a huge lump. I mean, you know, when we first implemented Breeze bikes, I remember how amazing it was, how bike ridership shot up, and then it kind of leveled off because there was like a low-hanging fruit concept. And I think that there's a much bigger amount of fruit that we can grab out of those driver-owned vehicles if we have this, I'm calling it a shuttle because it's smaller and more local than a bus, but it would just be a route, a circle, or maybe two circles going around the two halves of the city. And I think it could really make a huge difference. I mean, there are ways to plan it where you would never be more than a 10-minute walk from one of those routes. And it just, it can't, it just can't be that impossible. And I would just really like to see motion on that, and if we need to speak to our city council to make that something that you can look at, we should know that. So, thank you.
Commissioner Sondra Bernardi?
I second what everyone has said, and rest my case.
I'm sorry? What did you say?
I second what everyone has said--
Thank you so much.
I know. I just want to reiterate my concern about all these new housing units that we're going to be seeing over the next 10 years. And, I mean, I think a lot of the responsibility for the traffic potentially generated is ours, and that would be a severe reduction of required parking, particularly near transit stations. That project we saw a few weeks ago in Bergamot that had 389 parking spaces, two blocks from a light rail station, was just blew me away, and that should not be happening. So I think parking is a large part of it. And I really appreciate what you've done. I will say personally, from my standpoint, I am a lot more conscious of bicycles than I used to be. I mean, a few, and I don't know if it's the signs or listening to you, whatever the heck, but I now look before I open my car door-- Which is a giant step for me. I mean, I'm just-- Actually, there's a, a few years ago, we were out on PCH and stopped in traffic and for whatever, oh, I know. Former mayor, I'm sorry. This is quick. Richard Reardon was riding his bike down the middle of the road, and my husband, my husband said, should I open the car door? Sorry. But all that is to say that I'm a lot more conscious of bicycles than I was, and I appreciate all you've done, and I love the green lanes. They're pretty and apparently appreciated. Actually, he's a cool guy. So thank you, thank you very much for all you've done and for all you're doing, and I look forward to hearing an update sometime before I'm gone. Thank you. So before, we have two options. One is I need to take a brief break, or we can just continue. Take five minutes, okay?
To mobility and individuals' projects affects on mobility. So I'm just going to start a little bit here with what the California Environmental Quality Act is about, short for CEQA. It was passed in 1970, and it was a public disclosure act. The point of the act was to inform decision-makers and the public about the potential environmental impacts of a project. It's not meant to be a process for approving or disapproving a project. It's really meant to be a public disclosure act. So projects that are not exempt from CEQA are required to either prepare an EIR and mitigate a MACDEC. And in those EIRs and mitigating MACDECs, they're required to address 17 environmental impacts, one of which is transportation and traffic. Currently, how we've done CEQA traffic analysis historically and how other cities have done is that we use the measure of LOS, Level of Service. The Level of Service is measured for an intersection or for a street, and it reflects the automobile delay of that particular street or intersection. It's based on a calculation of how many vehicles are driving through the intersection and what the capacity of that intersection is. So it's based on a VC ratio, which is the vehicle's capacity ratio. And the LOS rating system goes from A to F, A meaning that it's a free-flow conditions, and an F is a stop-and-go conditions where you have a heavily traveled intersection. So the city's significance criteria was adopted in 1991, and it was, it's LOS-based criteria. It's based on a sliding scale, so the more congested an intersection is, the more stringent the threshold is. So for example, if you have an LOS of F at an existing intersection, any delay caused by a project could be considered a significant impact. The same goes to the residential street segment criteria. It's based on the sliding scale, and so depending on what the street classification is, for example, if you're a local street and you have more than a certain number of trips, the addition of even one trip can trigger a significant impact. So I'm going to illustrate the pitfalls of using LOS and how it has not worked for the city and for infill development. Here you'll see just, you know, the street grid here, you'll see the city and then the more outlying areas, which are the suburbs. And if you place a housing project in the middle of the city here, you'll have relatively little vehicle travel loaded onto the network, but you get a lot of LOS impacts because those intersections already have a high level of traffic going through those. And so if you already have those high levels of traffic, adding on a couple of trips to those intersections will create an impact. Now in contrast, when you look at a subdivision project in the middle of a suburb, you have trips loaded onto the travel, onto the roadway network, and the travel, the vehicle travel, as you see, is a lot more extensive, but then you have very few LOS impacts because it's so dispersed that there's only a couple intersection impacts that are triggered. So LOS, as you can see here, LOS A is, is a free-flowing conditions where you basically have an intersection with no traffic at all. And then you have, the way that LOS classifies a complete street, like the one on the right, like the picture on the right, it classifies as LOS F because it's a very auto-centric metric. It's not considering other modes, including vehicle, including bicycles, pedestrians, or transit. And so it really fails to be an effective measure of the success of the transportation Other pitfalls of LOS and how it fails as an effective measure is that it really measures automobile delay and not adverse physical impact on the environment, which is really the point of CEQA. CEQA says we have to analyze the physical impacts of the environment. So LOS doesn't really do that because it's based on automobile delay. It also doesn't align with other CEQA analysis, such as air quality and GHD. When we analyze for air quality and GHD impacts, we're not just looking at the trips. We're looking at the vehicle trip length times the number of trips, and that's how, that's how you get to air quality emissions and GHD emissions because it's not just about how, the number of trips that people are driving, it's about how far they're driving as well. LOS also conflicts with a number of goals for modern transportation planning. As I showed you in those two illustrations earlier, it's really biased against infill development in urban areas and really just is more, is a more focused and allows a lot more develop in suburban areas and outlying development areas. LOS mitigation is also problematic in the sense that really the way to mitigate for automobile delay is to wind the roadway. So in a city like ours, we're already developed. There's very limited, you know, space for roadway windings, and also, as we discussed earlier, it's detrimental to pedestrians and bicyclists. And that kind of mitigation also induces more vehicle travel. With regard to how LOS has affected the city of Santa Monica and how we do things, as I said before, it's really counter to us adopted loose policies, which says that we want to develop near transit, which you guys have already talked about. We want to, but the problem with LOS is that it really, the problem with LOS is that it motivates development projects to go in more, I guess, less traveled areas. So like areas that are residential will have, you know, more, will have intersections that are LOS of A or B. So it's really, it's really counter to what we're trying to do, which is to focus development near transit. Also, when we do, when we do traffic studies, we typically find that those LOS impacts already occur, always occur at freeway exits and entries. And so we see those same bottlenecks and same LOS impacts occurring in each and every traffic study, so it doesn't really provide us meaningful information. Opportunities to mitigate LOS are also very limited. As I talked about before, we have very little capacity to wind the roadway nor do we want to because this is detrimental to a lot of our mobility opportunities, other mobility opportunities. And typically, LOS is the only environmental impact, and so we see a lot of projects come through with massive EIRs, and the only impact that we find is really traffic. This can hinder a lot of small housing projects, too. We've seen some small housing projects having to do EIRs because, you know, that's the potential significant impact that they would have. And then finally, as I said before, LOS conflicts with not only the citywide loose rules, but also, you know, all the other things that we were just talking about earlier, you know, the Sustainable City Plan, the Bike Action Plan, the Pet Action Plan, Vision Zero, all those do not focus on LOS. It talks more about this holistic strategy of getting people out of their vehicles and driving less and reducing vehicle trips and vehicle travel distance. So before I move into Senate Bill 743, I kind of want to talk about what the genesis of SB 743 came about and how that came about. It really started with the state recognizing that we needed to attack GHD and climate change. So in 2006, the state passed AB 32, which some of you might be aware, it was the first legislation in the state to really attack climate change. AB 32 set up a target for the state to reduce greenhouse gas levels by 2020 to 1990 levels. Following up on that, there was a series of executive orders, one of which was a 2012 executive order, B16-12, which specified that GHD emissions for transportation needed to be reduced by 80% below 1990 levels by 2050. And then following up on that, in 2016, SB 32 was passed, which set even a longer-range target for reducing GHD emissions. And then the California Air Resources Board was tasked with trying to figure out a strategy to how we can achieve all these GHD reduction targets. And so they determined that, you know, electrical vehicles and, and all these other things alone would not reduce GHD emissions, that we really needed to attack VMT growth. So SB 743 was passed in 2013 by state legislature, and it was intended to promote sustainable transportation planning, particularly with regards to how projects are treated under CEQA. There was a desire to make sure that CEQA was consistent with state policy and administration goals, including those that addressed greenhouse gas, improved health, fiscal costs, and access to destinations. So one of the things that, one of the most important things that SB 743 did was to make changes to the way that projects-- was to make changes to the way that projects are analyzed under SEQA with regards to transportation. It stated that LOS should not be used as the basis for determining whether or not a traffic impact would occur. SB seven forty-three directed the Office of Planning and Research, OPR, to specify a replacement criteria for LOS. And that alternative criteria must promote a reduction of GHG emissions, multimodal transportation, and diversity of land uses. It said that once that replacement criteria was established, LOS can no longer be used. This, I want to iterate that this applies to SEQA only, that does not preempt a local jurisdiction to apply local planning requirements if they so choose. So SB seven forty-three and OPR, OPR was tasked with this task of coming up with an alternative metric. And it's been a very long process, it was a five-year effort, partly due to a lot of controversies about what should be the significant threshold, what should be the appropriate metric and so forth. And so they produced a series of documents, the first of which came out in December of two thousand and thirteen, which talked about a number of alternative criteria and metrics. And they kind of really landed on VMT, but that first document stated that LOS should not be used, obviously. And then the second and the third document, the second document was produced in two thousand and fourteen, and then the preliminary document was produced in two thousand and sixteen. And in both those documents, it gave a preview to the public that VMT would be the alternative metric and that would be the replacement to LOS. And those two documents were circulated for quite some time, there was a lot of comments, comments provided to OPR on that. And so it took a couple years, but at the end of December two thousand and eighteen, right after the holidays, OPR finally adopted new SEQA guidelines and produced a technical advisory. That technical advisory provided the guidance, or provides the recommended guidance for how lead agencies are to conduct transportation review. In that document, that technical advisory, it states that projects near transit, particularly within a half-mile of transit, should be determined to be less insignificant. So any project within transit, you know, gets a pass. And so they also said that VMT, for those projects that are not screened out, VMT analysis must be conducted, and they specify some significance criteria, which I'll get to in a little bit. But those recommended significance criteria are just recommended. They did say that lead agencies and cities are allowed to adopt their own thresholds, so long as supported by substantial evidence. And so the SEQA updates also says that there's a two-year phase-in period, but by July first, two thousand and twenty, all cities must have a replacement metric to LOS and adopt it. So diving a little bit into the OPR's technical advisory, as I said before, it provided guidance, it provides guidance for how cities are to conduct transportation review under SEQA. It recommends screening out projects near transit, as I said, that's the half-mile. And there are certain presumptions though. They said that if the project has an FAR of zero point seven five or less, then it should not be screened out. They said it also cannot oversupply parking, that it must be consistent with the regional sustainable community strategy, and that it cannot replace affordable housing with a lower number of housing that is either moderate or high-income. And projects that are located outside of these transit areas will be required to perform the VMT analysis. And once they perform the VMT analysis, they have to compare it against the significant thresholds. And there are recommended significant thresholds. What they have recommended was that, for example, like a mixed-use project, if there's a residential and a commercial component, that you analyze those two land use components separately. And so knowing that there's a lot of range of projects out there, they really only provided significant thresholds for three types of uses. One is residential, and the second is office, and the third is retail. And what they base their thresholds on for residential and office is based on research. They looked at what the state climate action goals were, the GHG goals are. And they recommend that for residential, that a project that exceeds fifteen percent below existing VMT per capita should be considered to have a significant impact. So let's say you have the existing VMT be ten, then fifteen percent below that is eight point five. So if you're exceeding eight point five, that's a significant impact. Now, actually, what I'm missing here in this first bullet is existing VMT per capita should say existing regional or local VMT. They gave the cities the option to either decide whether or not you want to do fifteen percent below existing regional or local. The second thing is similarly, the office, they wanted, they set a threshold of fifty percent below existing regional VMT per employee. And for retail, they said, well, generally, retail that is local-serving, if you're local-serving, you shouldn't have any net increase in VMT because the idea is if you put a grocery store in an urban area, it should have low VMT because usually the residents are walking to that grocery store. And so their recommended threshold was any net increase in total VMT. So with VMT, vehicle miles traveled, it really captures the full extent of the vehicle travel effects on the roadway. It's essentially a simple formula, a trip rate times the trip length. We always calculate out trip rate anyways when we're doing LOS, and so that's not that much different. The only nuance to that is that we're now adding on trip length. Vehicle miles, travel relates better to the way we do environmental impact analysis under SEQA. We already do VMT analysis and when we calculate out GHG emissions, as I said before. And the VMT mitigation doesn't induce more vehicle travel. VMT mitigation could include enhanced TDM, as you guys have talked about earlier, and then we'll get to that discussion later on. But it could be a different mix of land use, it could be increased access to transit and services, improvements to bicycle and pedestrian networks, or limiting parking, as we talked about, you know, perhaps the limiting parking supply. Of course, that requires changes to the parking requirements or parking requirements and the ordinance. But there's a slew of, basically, there's a whole slew of mitigation measures that we open up by using VMT that we were never able to do with LOS because LOS focused so much on really just expanding roadway capacity. With VMT, we also promote more complete streets and physical projects that increase mobility options. VMT is also more aligned with the LOSE and other goals that we talked about, the Vision Zero, well-being, Pedestrian Action Plan, and Bike Action Plan. So jumping back to the screening thresholds, we talked about the transit priority areas and the half-mile. This is our city's map, and the ones in blue, the areas in blue, are transit priority areas. These are the half-mile blobs, I call them. So basically, if you were to apply OPR's screening thresholds, any project regardless of size would be screened out from transportation analysis. Really only a small subset of, you know, projects located within the northern Montana neighborhood and near the airport would be subject to a VMT analysis. But we don't really see much development going on in those areas anyways, so. So we're looking at right now considering city-specific screening thresholds, and these are up for discussion, we'd like to get your input on these. We wanted a tiered screening criteria, meaning that we go through different tiers, and it's a three-tier system. And so the first tier criteria, the first screening criteria that we were thinking is based really on current SEQA streamlining regulations. Right now, there's already a SEQA Section twenty-one five-five-point-one that exempts projects that are two hundred units or less from having to do SEQA anyways. So we figured we should just match up with that because it makes sense to. We also decided that affordable housing, a hundred percent affordable housing should probably be screened out. And then also fifty thousand square feet of commercial floor area or less. And this also matches up with the current SEQA streamlining guidelines, which says that commercial projects are about the size and consistent with the LOSE. They're usually considered exempt as well. Other uses that would be screened out would be educational facilities, provided there's no increase in student enrollment. Or if there is an increase in student enrollment, at least seventy-five percent of the population, of the student population, comes from a close proximity of the school, a two-mile proximity of the school. Other uses that we're considering screening out are civic government uses of fifty thousand square feet or less, as well as local-serving parks and recreational facilities. So if you're any one of those land uses, then you would not have to do any more VMT analysis. And so you stop there. So, but if you're not any one of those uses and you exceed those criteria, then you move to tier two. Tier two really goes to the heart of what we were talking about earlier, which is, you know, how do we address our congestion problems and our mobility concerns? And so tier two speaks to the heart of that, which is we said, well, you know, if you're exceeding those criteria, those land use criteria, and you're bigger than those criteria, then you should at least be located within a half-mile walking distance of an expo station or within a quarter-mile of a BRT stop. And so these are walking distances, not as a profile, I should mention that. So this really allows us to make sure that there's more of an incentive for people to develop near transit. And then lastly, you know, if no, you don't need to conduct any more VMT analysis. If yes, and you are located, you still have to go, oh, sorry, if no, and you are located further away from transit, then you have to conduct those VMT analysis. And then the next tier is that you also have to make sure that you're not providing more parking than code. So if you're exceeding parking, or if you're located in the downtown or any other area that doesn't have parking requirements, if you're exceeding the parking maximums, then you would not be screened out. You would have to do a VMT analysis. So with the draft screening criteria, VMT analysis will only be conducted for larger projects that are located away from transit. These are projects that are, you know, let's say, two hundred and fifty units located, you know, point seven mile away from the expo station. VMT analysis, however, would be a lot easier than what we currently do today, which is LOS analysis because LOS analysis looks at a number of intersections for a number of projects before we've looked at upwards of a hundred intersections. And all those intersections need traffic counts, and so this would really simplify the traffic analysis for projects. VMT, the VMT information, if you're doing a VMT analysis, the VMT information such as trip length, we already have that in our travel demand model. Right now, it's being calibrated using cellphone data so that we could know approximate trip lengths. So we were able to get VMT information by using lookup tables that are based on data derived from the city's TDFM. One of the things we wanted to discuss and get your input on are the significant thresholds. We had talked earlier about OPR's recommended thresholds, which are fifteen percent below existing regional or local for residential. And then for office, it was fifteen percent below existing for office. And then for retail, it was any net increase. And so we wanted to get your input on whether or not you think those are appropriate. Or we also discussed, we're considering the use of city-specific thresholds that are a little more aligned with our city goals and objectives. Right now, what we're trying to do is try to figure out where existing VMT is, and then perhaps aligning that with the Climate Action Plan goals and seeing what we need to do in terms of matching up with that. But we all know, as we talked about earlier, that, you know, just a change in process is not going to result in a VMT reduction. I mean, this, you know, SEQA is SEQA, it's an informational process. It doesn't have any teeth in terms of, you know, getting to the heart of really reducing VMT in the sense that, you know, we really need to beef up those TDM measures. And that's why mobility is here too, is because we had discussed a two-phased effort. You know, one is really to modernize SEQA so that it reflects VMT. But also, parallel to that, and a multi-faceted effort is to really update the Transportation Demand Management ordinance so that we capture projects that are screened out. And so they would still have TDM requirements. But also, we want to update the TDM ordinance perhaps to identify new TDM opportunities. There's been changes to the way, to mobility trends and how people travel and move around the city too. So that is part of the next phase is to, once after we update our VMT Transportation Review Guidelines, that we would attack the TDM ordinance and try to get some more teeth into that, especially since we are seeing a number of projects being SEQA-exempt. Also, another thing is looking at changes to the Transportation Impact Fee. As we talked about before, we have a slew of housing projects coming on board. And right now, we know that TDM is less effective for residential projects, as we said. And so we need to look at our TIF again to see if there needs to be some changes to the rate structure so that perhaps we provide a higher rate for residential because those residential projects will need more infrastructure-based improvements to really address their increase in VMT. And so another thing that we also need to do with the TIF is match it up to, it's right now a trip-based rate, and we needed to be a VMT rate possibly, so. So that's what we're looking at in parallel to the efforts of updating the SEQA guidelines. So with that, maybe with these questions, I tried to make it short. There's a lot more into the OPR's technical advisory that I've not discussed. It's all attached to the staff report, but I tried to make it a little bit more abbreviated. But just the three questions we wanted to discuss with you tonight are whether or not our screening criteria are appropriate. You saw OPR's screening criteria, and then there's the ones that the city staff is considering. Secondly, you know, we have the screening criteria, but what is the appropriate significance criteria? Should we rely on OPR's recommended thresholds? Or should we develop more city-specific criteria? And then lastly, you know, we talked about not just the process, but how are we going to get these projects, especially all these slew of housing projects that are going to be coming down the line? Like, how are we going to address their VMT impacts? What types of mitigation, TDM, do you guys want to see in these projects? Both for projects that are screened out and for projects that may be determined to have a significant impact. So with that, welcome any questions.
Thank you. Actually, we have one chip, and I think we're going to take that and then follow it with staff questions. Paul Lamar. Thank you, Rachel, it was wonderful.
Good evening, Commission. Paul Lamar with Harding Lamar, Keter and Cozal. Overall, the city's land use strategy, as outlined in its LOSE, is to increase housing in our jobs-rich environment and to co-locate housing and jobs. So when you're looking at this VMT methodology, which a hundred percent support we have to do, and obviously it's to correct all the problems that LOS has created, but I want to just make sure as we're looking at VMT, we're making sure that there's no unintended consequences. With respect to this current citywide VMT for residential, I think we'll find that our residential uses have a very low VMT compared to the region. Our residents have to drive less to get goods and services and go to their jobs compared with the region. And you can see that in our traffic patterns here. The way that OPR does, is their guidance is to separate the two land use categories, housing from office. So when you're comparing your new project and its residential VMT, if you compare it against our current citywide, it may have one result versus comparing it with the regional. So say we're at a ten and the region's at a twenty, a new housing project might be at an eleven, and that would show an impact compared with our existing city residents. But it would be a huge benefit compared with the region. And so you have to look at where are those residents commuting to? And the other side of the coin is the jobs. So if we could reduce one of the jobs trips, it's a twenty miles, as a result of just adding this one mile increase on the residential, you're having an overall decrease in the VMT, but you're showing this impact. And so I just want to make sure that as the city moves forward, they look at whether we should continue to use, whether city-wide is the right method as opposed to regional, and also how our required and also how our requirement for two and three bedrooms plays into it. Because my understanding is you have to do a denominator based on the number of persons for households, and we don't have data to support an increased number of persons in a two and three-bedroom unit, which to me is intuitive. So just all these little nuances, making sure we're not discouraging, I think, the overall housing goal. And then the second piece about the TIF is, I hear the discussion about wanting to increase the TIF. It just makes me cringe because we're not seeing new housing projects, we're not finding them to be feasible right now, in my opinion, in light of the affordable housing obligation. So I really think the feasibility piece of it is going to be critical before the city starts ratcheting up fees again.
Thank you. Other questions, Paula?
Yes. So you represent a lot of developers, a lot of projects. What do you think's appropriate TDM measure going forward for projects?
I think it would be appropriate for the city to pay it off a regional VMT and a reduction below that. I think OPR says you could do 15%. I think the city could take a greater percent if it wanted to make sure it was closer to where we are today. But my concern is our current unit mix doesn't reflect what we're trying to require and incentivize in our new projects of the two and three bedrooms, and we might be showing an impact which is counterproductive to wanting to add housing with family-sized units.
I have a question, Paula.
And we discussed this earlier today. When you look at all the, basically the screening criteria, it's hard to imagine that any project in Santa Monica, other than one north of Montana, is going to be covered by the VMT analysis.
Yeah.
Everything downtown, at least, with a half a mile of transit.
It did help me actually sitting here and see how Rachel went through it. I hope that the city will back up the screening criteria. I do fear that the transition to VMT is going to bring on a lot of litigation with it. And so, yes.
You see my point.
I see your point. If it gets adopted as it's, as it's outlined, it may be that it's very few. I still think, even if you were to add housing in some of these areas of the city, the airport or, you know, that's going to be a net positive to us, right? Right near all those jobs. So it's just intuitively, it doesn't make sense to me. So I think we need to look at the math and make sure we're not disincentivizing housing jobs.
That's assuming we don't accept these criteria.
I was just suggesting, I think her map showed that the airport wasn't included.
That what wasn't?
That the airport wasn't included. I know, I don't want to open up a Ken Forbes, but for me, I'm thinking that would be a great place to put housing, right near all those jobs.
Commissioner Landers.
I just wanted to ask, thank you for that. I think, I think you're right. I mean, it reminds me of the conversations about water use, right? That when you put in a multi-family unit, the number of, that the water use per person drops radically, but there may be more water being used. And we've had similar conversations about water neutrality. When you talk about the region, what do you mean by the region? Because if we go out, if we look at west of the 405, for example, we're all in the same boat. How wide, how wide a net would you pass for the region? Would you go countywide? Would you go? I'm just, I'm asking.
Sorry, I think there, I don't know if I had, there's a peg on here where SCAG has a regional number and it came out slightly over 20. I'd have to look up exactly where they draw the boundary.
So is that the MTO?
I don't know, I have to look it up for you. But a SEQA attorney that is in the weeds on this provided this data that came from SCAG on what that regional VMT would be.
So would it be fair to say that your recommend, the purpose of your raising this is to make sure that we don't trigger VMT studies inadvertently and disadvantage these, disadvantage it? So for staff to go, I mean, just to clarify, for staff to go back as it's developing the ordinance, that's your, the outcome that you're looking for, rather than saying, go to the region or go to the city? So there may be a variety of ways to achieve that outcome.
Yeah, I just said the staff report said that they were considering citywide, and I was saying you should look at whether that's going to disincentivize the housing that you want and whether you should use regional. Or maybe the VMT methodology has been evolving and the math has been evolving, but that's not such an issue.
Okay, I actually talked to Lisa Pastor from New York a few hours ago. She says hello to everyone. And she said there are actually sub-regional VMTs, and I don't know exactly what she was referring to, but, so, because the idea of using LA City is crazy because it's suburban sprawl. But there are subregions, so that might be something, something we want to go in that direction to look at.
Yeah, I will follow up with where that geographic boundary was, that we had come up with the 20 miles.
But the way I read this, Paula, if you agree, is that everything's exempt, so it would sort of, it's a sort of planning exercise.
Based on the screening criteria that staff is looking, considering, it seems very possible.
Thank you. So we are now ready for questions by the commissioners upstairs.
Can I just make one clarification? The OPR's map, that big blue blob, that's what OPR is recommending. Our recommendation is a little more pared down. They're recommending any bus stop, half mile of any bus stop. So we're recommending just expo stops and the BRT stops.
But that's still, I mean, a half a mile from the expo stop is all of downtown and much of, you know.
Yeah, but there's already an existing SEQA transit exemption, or SEQA exemption for projects consistent with ECP, so in effect, it doesn't really make a difference.
That's a good point. Other commissioners? Commissioner Reese, do you want to go first, because you may have some.
On the, I mean, I guess I'm leaning towards having the city have its own kind of criteria, thresholds, but I just have some questions on the thresholds. I, too, had a conversation with Commissioner Pastor, and she was concerned about the 50,000 square feet, that we need the little nuance about what those uses are. Because if it's a grocery store, which you had talked about in your thing, so it's a 40,000 square foot grocery store, and surrounded by 12,000 square feet of neighborhood serving retail, then it would get captured by this. But again, it's something that we're looking for in the community. So can we build in that kind of a nuance?
Yes, yeah, we've discussed this actually before, before, too. We discussed, you know, the possibility just that there might be multiple stores, you might have the grocery store and then a dry cleaners next door, or, you know, a nail salon. And so there is that possibility to build in that flexibility to where we say that 50,000 square feet applies to a single tenant. We could do that, so long as it's what we're calling local serving, I guess.
Yeah, I think that's the key, is the nuance to what the use is. And then I, I mean, I'm very supportive of screening out 100% affordable ones, but I find it interesting that we have a cap for, we have a threshold for 200 residential developments and 100%, and 100% affordable?
100%? Well, I mean, I think the direction is that most, you know, I think the item got pulled, but I think the direction is that most affordable housing projects are probably going to be administratively approved now, so AA projects don't, are not subject to SEQA, so.
Well, and not only that, is there ever been a 201 unit affordable project?
There's too many.
But I'm just saying, I'm just, I'm not understanding why there's a distinction between 200 residential units any type and 100% affordable project, because there are really very few 100% affordable projects that go over 200 units. I happen to be working on a couple of them, but they're kind of unicorn projects, they're very rare. So I'm wondering if we could just leave it at the 200 residential units and still be fine? Plus what you just said, which is a lot of them are going to be administrative.
Yeah, we can.
And then the other one that I would kind of add into that is bike infrastructure.
Yeah, and that's one of the things I mentioned I did not include in this report. If you look in the technical advisory, it talks about, there's a whole different section for transportation projects, and did not include it in here because more than likely, we're going to adopt whatever's in the technical advisory, and that technical advisory screens out a number of projects that are not VMT inducing. These include bike projects, transit projects, a number of basically, you know, multimotor projects are all going to be screened out.
Okay, well, that is critical to just keep our eye on, because we don't want to get stuck in the, you know, we've seen some pretty bad battles over, somebody wants to put in a bike lane, they get sued on SEQA.
Yeah, exactly. And that's particularly why this SB 743 was passed, because San Francisco got sued for their bike action plan, you know, because it was affecting LOS.
Then I, I want to ask a question about this. Exceeds 15%, this is the OPR suggested threshold, I just want to make sure I understand that. Can you explain to me a little bit more what it means by exceeds 15% of existing VMT per capita for the region? What are they actually looking at there?
Sure, let's, I mean, the regional, actually, as Paula correctly noted, is 20 in the region. That's what's currently in SCAG's RTP, or the newest draft RTP, it's out for public review, but they break it down. And so in LA County, I think the regional per capita, and I don't think they separated by residential versus employee, but it's about 20, 20 VMT per capita. And so 15% below that, let's say.
So what you're saying to me is that the typical individual drives about 20 vehicle miles?
Correct, and the significant threshold would be anything that's, you know, 15% below that threshold.
All right, that's clear to me now. I think I heard another question about, I was kind of taken aback by your statement of the TDMs are not effective for residential trips, but I think we've heard enough about that tonight.
I should rephrase, not as effective. And Colleen is here, too, she can speak a little bit more to it, as she did earlier, so I'm not going to bring her up here.
Yeah, as you said, there are very few TDM strategies, so not to, I'm trying to get you in trouble with Colleen. And then I just would echo another comment that we heard, which is raising housing, raising fees right now on the construction of housing seems to be counter to where we really do want to head. But other than that, I appreciate this, and I look forward to the transition to VMT.
So the single question, Commissioner Reese had it, what in your mind is the value of city-specific targets?
In my mind, I think that the regional is fairly high, as Chair Lambert had pointed out, is that includes areas that are a lot more suburban, so the regional tends to be almost double what we have. In my mind, I don't think we want to go backwards. If we have a system VMT of 10, 15% below 20 is still about 10. And so in my mind, I don't think we would want to go backwards and have a VMT that's, a threshold that's larger than what.
I understand that, but do you have some specific things that you think can be achieved only by city targets?
Yeah, I mean, I think that we would be able to enable more VMT mitigation if we have a lower threshold. I mean, that opens up a whole new world of, you know, VMT mitigation, especially with a lower, a lower threshold, with lower significance criteria.
And what have been the thoughts about what TDM measures you could use, given the proponent of construction here will be residential?
Well, I mean, I think it's like we discussed earlier, you know, a lot more investments in our infrastructure, our bike and pet infrastructure, but also opening the doors to, you know, the incentives, as Francie talked about, the carrots, you know, the more flexible , you know, transportation allowance, the average Joe TDM strategies that Colleen had talked about. Right now, those are not, we don't have the ability to do that. And so by updating the TDM ordinance, we'd be able to at least open up those ones as well. But having that criteria as well, the significant criteria that's based on VMT will also allow us to get some of those, some of the TDM measures that way through SEQA as well.
Do you see that, you and Colleen, as the next step if we move forward on this tonight?
Yeah, I think it's a next step, it's an important next step, because we don't just want to allow these residential projects to move through without imposing any more stricter.
When would you come back with that?
Well, we're working on maybe mid, mid-year this year, is to try to get started on that work.
Isn't there a July 1 kickoff for someplace?
Well, July 1 is when we have to adopt the significant threshold in the new transportation guidelines.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I'm actually going to change tradition and ask some questions. Oh, just so that Jim can hear.
Such a radical.
I want to, this is, the index is by, by per capita, right?
Per capita, and so OPR says we have to analyze each of the land uses separately, residential separated from office.
I understand, but we have a very small household size in Santa Monica, which may actually be getting smaller, so how do you adjust for all that?
Yeah, and then that's one of the things that we've been looking at, is looking at the household, because that does play into it. So when you have, when you have a vehicle trip length, we have to divide it by the number of persons in the unit, and so that's.
What assumption do you use about the persons in the unit?
Well, as Paula talked briefly about, we've been looking at census data. I mean, there are census data for household size based on, you know, I guess, areas. It's not a perfect, it's not a perfect exercise, because, you know, for example, in the downtown, we know that the average household size is 1.3, but it's partly because those units are smaller, and you have a lot more studios and one bedrooms. Unfortunately, the census doesn't break us, break down household size by, you know, number of bedrooms in a unit, so.
A related question is, we are hopefully looking at reducing minimum parking requirements. So if you're using a VMT for existing housing that had the higher parking requirements, are you going to adjust that for the fact that maybe now we now only require one space per unit versus you four of us, too?
Yeah, certainly. We are looking, because the way we used to do LOS analysis was that we looked at trip generation, but we always went conservative. We said, you know, if you have two units, we're going to assume you have two cars. And so we applied that two-car trip rate to it. So now, it's a whole different kind of strategy now. We can't think of it that way, because parking is the driver to these trips. And so if a unit is providing only one parking space, perhaps we, now we have to apply a different trip generation rate.
So we come up with a formula, you will acknowledge that, that we may be lowering parking requirements, and that will somehow be, well.
Sorry.
You do something by June or July, right?
Yes, we will produce a transportation, a draft of a transportation guidelines for you to review.
It'll be like a parking acknowledgement.
It will acknowledge that parking plays a factor in determining trip generation.
And then the other question that I had, and actually Lisa had, too, was on the indices on page eight, beg the question of, if you have, for example, a project that has 100,000 units, and in the top, let's say it's 75,000, whatever, 80,000, 40,000, 50,000, would that, even though it's only 100 units, would that trigger the VMT?
Sorry, can you repeat the question? I didn't hear the question.
If you have a mixed-use project, and you have 100 housing units, which would not trigger the VMT, but you have a commercial space that's bigger than 50,000, would the entire project be looked at for VMT?
Yes, it would be reviewed for VMT analysis.
Okay. Even though the housing, which would probably be subdivided into airspace, is still considered part of the same project?
Yes. And we're just saying you have to do the VMT analysis, we're not saying it's significant.
It might be exempt.
Everything's exempt. I mean, this is like a kind of rhetorical, I want to make it clear. In that situation, like, even though you don't meet the criteria, so you have to go to tier one, but if the answer to tier two is. No, you still go to tier two, right? So there's still that. I mean, I want to, you know.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I forgot.
So, you know, there's still the possibility of, you know, the analysis not being.
Yeah, sorry, I forgot about that, yeah. As long as it's within the 0.5 mile, then not necessarily, unless they're providing over-parking.
And then I have a final question. If, for some reason, the commission, the city council decides to continue doing LOS, now, I don't know why that would happen, but maybe they do, it's come up. The Housing Accountability Act would trump that one?
Correct. We did have one project, and if there's a housing project that has a significant traffic impact, you would still have to, you would still have to.
So the LOS is not an objective that if they violate it, so now it's a problem? How's the Accountability Act actually supersede? No, the law is such that we have to adopt VMT.
No, I understand, but if someone wants to additionally.
Additionally, an LOS, which I can't target.
Right.
No, that's the difference. I mean, some cities are doing that, just as a matter of just doing it, because it's what they used to do, but, you know, from the SEQA perspective, it's not required. But if you found an LOS that was like F, that could not stop a housing project, a Housing Accountability Act would step in and say, no, you can't do that, right? Well, I mean, you have to, yeah, I mean, the HAA is clear in terms of something needs to be checked. That's what I thought. The law is what it is. The law is what it is, so. Thank God. And I also want to make it clear that I'm a housing proponent totally, and the only reason I get rough that discussion up a few, a little while, was I just wanted to, some kind of traffic management program initiated with our very robust housing production program that's going to happen over the next 10 years. I think that's it. Commissioner Landers, I'll do two more.
So just two. How does VMT account for TNCs? Essentially, we've seen the, when we eliminate parking, what we've seen is that Rideshare is still putting vehicles on the road. So is there, am I missing something? Is VMT?
No, it's a very good question, it's a very loaded question in a sense.
I don't need it to be, I'm asking for negative curiosity.
We've been having multiple discussions about that, and so, I mean, you've probably seen the studies from New York and everywhere. you've probably seen the studies from New York and everywhere else, in San Francisco, that have said that TNCs contribute to VMT.
Exactly.
Um, and so, we know that, and they're somewhat captured in the model, in the sense that we're, we're capturing trips using cellphone data, so, whatever, whatever Uber, Lyft that's driving out there, it is capturing their model, but how we're analyzing the effects of it, it's, we haven't been, I'll be honest, because they haven't been able, they haven't shared any of the data, nor do they want to share any of their data.
Right.
Um, we've asked them several times, they, it's for a number of reasons, they've only shared a limited amount of data to certain cities. I know, for, for example, San Francisco, they shared some limited data, but, um, yeah, it's, it's hard to assess, but, I mean, even, I mean, it's a very good question, even, you know, SCAG's travel-to-man model, um, they recognize that, uh, TNCs do, are contributing to the VMT.
And then, just an observation on the list of exclusions that's in the technical advisory, because we were talking about it earlier, um, and I'm torn about how to treat this, it strikes me that another thing you might want to add to that list is, um, facilities that convert, that mode shift, so, what we were, I mean, we talked about, um, we talked about secondary sorting areas, right, that would stop trucks from moving through the city, but would move them onto electric bikes, for example, but I think whether it's packages or people, the same might apply to, uh, load areas for shuttles, um, and I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to hang up a project because it's doing what we want it to do, similarly, and we never, we didn't get, you know, I didn't ask it, because we were limited on that, on the scope of the parking, but, you know, valet, universal valet, which has come up, have, you know, where we can get somebody to park outside, not outside the city, but it's there. Well, sure, right, but, um, let it be LA's problem, um, but you get what I'm saying, where we're, where we're contributing to teaching people that they can move around via other means, um, that may require some sort of intermediate land use, and we ought to, we ought to at least be intentional about how we use it, or account for it. That's it, that's, that's it.
Commissioner Fresco?
I don't have anything to add.
Oh, my goodness, Commissioner Father Canardi.
Oh, yeah, uh, so, I'm, I'm looking at this, first of all, there's this long discussion trashing LOS, which is fine, uh, but, there's one major advantage of LOS, is that it's measurable, it's a real thing, you can measure, you can see the thing before, you build a project, you can go back and look at those intersections, see what happened. Seems with the vehicle miles traveled, it's kind of a rubber measurement, it has no real basis in reality, it's a big wild joke, it really is, it's a rubber number, and I'll tell you why, if the object is to trade people's time for greenhouse gases, because that's what we're really saying here, right, what we're saying is, I'm going to shift a whole bunch of people to bicycles, or walking, and it's going to take them more time, often, to get to where they're going than if they had taken the car, or the bus, right, I mean, ultimately, that's what it comes down to, uh, for, certainly for terms of any length. If the trips are very short, obviously, it's easier to walk down a block than it is to get in your car and drive a block, but as the trip gets longer, and most trips tend to get longer than one block, you, you end up losing, you're losing time, so what you're trading is being on gas on one side, and people's time on the other, that's really the bottom line. So, the fact that you took a long time to get to downtown, you know, or to get to Mel's Diner, is an example of that, that it would still, would have taken you longer to walk than it took you to drive.
Can I just do that for you?
I, I know, but, you know, I'm, I'm not saying that it's, it's a personal thing, I'm just saying that it was still faster to drive, but driving created much more greenhouse gas, so it's unclear to me, where this vehicle miles travel, what's the linkage between that, and we're going to sacrifice people's time, we're really saying it's not very important compared to the problems of greenhouse gas, and that's fine, that's, that's a calculation we make as a society, so, where do we get these numbers?
Well, can I just say, well, it's not just about the, it's really about the people's time traveling through an intersection, so, I mean, if you look at, if you look at, for example, two cities like, for example, Denver and Charlotte, and they've been, they've done studies, in terms of the commute times, Denver has a lot of congestion, but their commute times have actually shortened, because people are traveling shorter distances, so they might be sitting five, 10 extra seconds at an intersection, but overall, their commute time is shorter, because they're not traveling 20 miles, 15 miles, they're now traveling three miles, and they may have to sit through those intersections a bit longer, but overall, their commute time is shorter.
Right, but what I'm saying, in our city, how do you make that calculation? I'll, I'll give you an example, if you said to people that 20% of our trips are commutes, and the other 80% are going to the store, and going to the gym, and going wherever else we go, um, and vehicle miles traveled is really a kind of, I'll say, commuter biased measurement?
No, vehicle miles traveled captures all trips, and, and I think Nina talked about this before, it's not just talking about you going to work, it's talking about you going to work, then to the coffee shop, then from the coffee shop to shopping, so, it captures the entire length of the trip.
But how do we get there? How do we say, if I took the city of Santa Monica and rebuilt it from scratch, how would I assign vehicle miles traveled to that city versus measuring the vehicle miles traveled that I already have in the city? It's already baked into the cake right now, where do I get that number from?
I, I don't think I quite understand your question, in terms of, we do have existing VMT and trip.
Where, how do we get that number?
We get that from cellphone, right now, we're, right now, our travel-to-man model right now is trip-based, and we use trip counts and everything, so, we've actually, we've actually purchased cellphone data, and it does, it's almost a scary thing, but it will track almost every trip that comes in and out of the city, and the trip length, where it stops, where it goes, and where, and so, we do have that information, we will get that information, so.
So, so, but how do we convert that? And the important thing is converting that to greenhouse gas, because that's the enemy, right, that's what we're trying to reduce.
And we, and we do, and we do that through our CECL analysis, we have a model, the Cali Mob model, and one of the inputs of how to calculate our greenhouse gas is VMT, so.
No, but what I'm saying is, how do you actually do that? Because how do you know that that's, how do you know that that iPhone is traveling on a scooter, versus a bicycle, versus a bus, versus a truck?
There are algorithms, yeah.
You know what I'm saying, that's it.
Yeah, so, the cellphone company, or the data company that sold us the VMT cellphone data, knows that kind of information, the term is a base, there's an algorithm, they determine it based on the speed of the travel, so you're on a bus, if you're, they could tell if you're on a, if you're on a scooter, you're going to be traveling much faster than a pedestrian and so forth, and so, there, I mean, it's not, it, it's just like LOS analysis, in the sense it's not always perfect, um, but, I mean, it, it does get us at a good idea of how each, how each trip is being made, is it by bus, or is it by bicycle, or is it by walking, so.
So, if, if the model is that accurate, can you tell me what the VMT of Santa Monica was two years ago?
Yeah, probably.
Well, could you tell us?
If we can get that cellphone data from two years ago, yes, but we, we've purchased it, and right now, our VMT per capita in the res, for residential is about 10.
What, but what I'm saying is, if you have that information, then you can measure if you are being successful. You see, you see where I'm going, I'm going with that?
Yes, yes.
So, I want to know, a year ago, you had the information, two years ago?
So, yeah.
How are we doing? How, how are, because this speaks to McKinnon's question, is, in the congestion model of our life, question mark, how are we doing?
So, you're, you're looking at citywide how we're doing, not this individual project?
Yeah, because remember, we have taken the individual projects entirely out of our cities in terms of VMT, they don't exist, because VMT doesn't measure anything in our city. North of Montana is not going to require VMT, Sunset Park's not going to require VMT, so there's no more VMT measurement in our city, we don't care, we really don't care, we're saying it's not important. You can clog up all of our intersections, you can mix pedestrians and bicycles, who cares? The point I'm making is that, the only measure left now is the citywide measure, how's our whole city doing?
Well, we're not looking at that in the guise of CECL, because CECL, we're looking at individual projects.
No, I guess, um, maybe we're not, we're not communicating here, I guess, if, if we had a discussion, should we use regional or citywide VMTs, we need to know what the citywide VMT is, we need to know the VMT for the entire city, and we have to have some way of translating that into a greenhouse gas.
Yeah, I mean, we are working, and as I said before, we do know our citywide VMT, which is, for the residential, it's 10, and we are working on, the office is about 13, 14, I believe, and so, we're working on getting the existing VMT, and then, but we're really talking about for, VMT for individual projects, now you asked a question of how we're measuring it from two years ago, we weren't measuring VMT two years ago, we were always doing LOS analysis two years ago.
Okay, thank you. I guess, I, I mean, I'm not sure how much more discussion we really need at this point, because this is basically all theoretical, I mean, most of the projects we're going to be looking at in the next, god knows how long, are not even covered by this, so.
Yeah, how many angels can dance on a pin, that's a good.
No, I understand your frustration, I mean, for me, there's a classic demonstration of LOS and all that, it's like the trains crossings, like, I stop at an intersection because of a train that wasn't there before, but it's also carrying 60 people, so, I'm, I'm delayed, and I'm inconvenienced, but there's 60 people going by me on public transportation, so, the LOS would show that as a problem, which it's not, but, you know. Five, sorry, five and, 60 people in half a car, okay. So, do we all, are we comfortable with what staff is recommending in terms of the exemptions and the tier one, two, and three, the local DMT? I, I'm a little uncomfortable, I know Jim wanted to take out the affordable housing, but I just think it's a good idea to highlight it, but 100% affordable housing is an assumption. I mean, there may be someday in our lifetime a 250-unit project, which is extremely unlikely, but I, I don't want to put it in.
I mean, we could take it out.
No, I don't, I don't want you to take it out, I want you to leave it in.
I think that was part of our thinking, if we didn't want to refute, but I understand, I mean, I think we'll, we'll, we'll look at that a little bit more, you know, but we just, we just didn't want to refute it, you know.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. I mean, the likelihood of anything bigger than 200 units is very slim.
Well, Chair, 415 in Arizona has the capacity for 500.
Yeah, but you build nothing else.
I mean, I think that what we've seen is that, you know, when you have, when you compare an affordable housing project versus a market rate project, um, you know, and say, I wouldn't say in all cases, but typically, you know, rates of vehicle ownership could make them be various, you know, is, is a little bit different, um, you know, so there's some. Well, it could be, you know, just depending.
It could be significantly different.
I think like empirically, we haven't sort of done like the why, you know, because we don't really have all that, but I think empirically, we've heard that from nonprofit housing providers in terms of, you know, rates of vehicle ownership, you know, how many parking, how many, how much parking, you know, is required to have, that sort of thing, you know, that obviously impacts VMT, so I think that was part of it.
So, it makes sense to keep it separate, also, senior housing, although other items as well, and that's affordable, so you're. Okay.
So, I think Chair, the only question that's number three up there, which is the VMT, um, TDM issues or TIF issues or something, and they're the toughest of all to answer. And the question, I guess, to the people sitting here is, do you want more time to develop up some models?
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
And then, and I agree with whoever it is who said that one more fee put on the pro, our housing is totally counterintuitive to what we're trying to do.
Well, except, and that's a possibility, except that when we set the TIF fee, it was at 60%, we had an Nexus study which said we could go to 100, and it may well be if we're not capturing, and there are no offers from people who are otherwise escaping the system, we may need to look at something.
Or they was also using old construction contracts, about 30% load, you know.
That's a possibility, but I think certainly going forward, if we're, if we're moving forward, and we seem to be doing that as a commissioner this evening along the route that you're going, then there needs to be some thought about what's the appropriate TDM measure as opposed to TIF. And I absolutely agree, if, we're not trying to discourage housing, but if there's no other alternative, then nothing's being offered.
I, I think we really need to think about TDM for housing.
What does that entail and look like? No, exactly, but that's why we have Colleen, expert, sitting right there, ready at a moment's notice to hit us with a TDM piece of legislation.
Okay, got it.
So, do we need to move anything here, Rachel, for you?
No, there's no motion or anything.
That's it.
Well, I wish you could come every night, that would be incredibly.
Exciting rubber CECL.
Okay, we are journeying at, my gun just went at 12:05.
Honestly, I'll live the nights like this, I'm serious, I'm not about better.
That's mine, that's.